Good evening, welcome to Placerville City Council Meeting on May 14th. Thank you for being here this evening and welcome to all of our distinguished department heads and other assorted staff members that are assembled here this evening. I'd like you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Could I please ask the clerk to call a roll?
Mayor Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
All right. Who's making the racket there? It's our high-tech audio system that we have.
Just touch it.
All right. Before I move on, Mr. Morris, I thought we might discuss moving the two ceremonial items up before we get into -- do we have members here from the organizations involved?
We do.
All right, well, I'll go ahead and start then with the item 6.1, which is the Memorial Day Proclamation, which I will be presenting at the service this year. I'll go ahead and read that, that'll be on May 27th. "A proclamation to the City Council of the City of Placerville declaring May 27th, 2019 as Memorial Day at the Eldorado County Veterans Monument. Whereas on Memorial Day, Americans -- America undertakes its solemn duty to remember the courageous men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in the defense of our country and the cause of freedom around the world. And whereas, as we honor those who have died in our nation's service, we understand and appreciate the values of patriotism, citizenship, commitment, honor, and duty. And whereas, when we consider their sacrifice, we must never forget that freedom comes at a cost, and it is our duty to uphold the principles they fought and died defending. Whereas, at this moment, men and women of the Air Force, Army, Navy, Marine Corps, and Coast Guard are serving around the world in harm's way and deserve our gratitude and respect. Now therefore, I, Mayor Acuna, Mayor of the City of Placerville, State of California, proclaim May 27th, 2019 as Memorial Day at the Eldorado Veterans Monument and urge all citizens to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our honored war dead and to renew our commitment to uphold the ideals for which they died. We pledge that their sacrifice will not have been in vain. It will be my honor to present that on behalf of the community at the ceremony on May 27th." The other item under ceremonial this evening is Rise and Shine Recognition. Mr. Morris, could you give a brief summary of what occurred this year for Rise and Shine?
I'll do my best. Maybe Terry or actually maybe Amy Zeller, who's in the audience, who helped, primarily helped organize, she was one of the key organizers for this, could do a better job. We had several projects throughout the city that we invited volunteers to help us do. In fact, this year, we extended the program, it went actually outside the city. We had other, in the past, has primarily been the JustServe.org group that has organized this. This year, many other church organizations joined with us. It's my understanding, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of over 600 volunteers this year, is that approximate, Amy? So, we had a good amount of volunteers doing projects here in town and outside of the city, but in the Placerville area. I want to just say, on behalf of the city and our, especially our Parks Department, the amount of work that we get done on that weekend is tremendous and it really helps us. Everything from roofing a storage shed, to painting, to cleaning up weeds, to spreading bark, there are a number of products, projects that get done, and it is a tremendous help to our small and beleaguered Parks Department that tries to keep up with these things on a daily basis. So, from that perspective, I want to thank each one of the volunteers and especially each one of the church groups. I'm not sure all that are here tonight, we invited the, all of them and all seven of them, I'm not sure if they're all here tonight, I heard back from some of them. So, with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you.
I appreciate that, Cleve, and in just a moment, I'll read the names of those churches. Is there any councilmembers' comments on our day of cleanup?
I would, well, a good part of my family went out and did a, cleaned up a cemetery, and it was a great day for us to get together, to hang out together, to do community service together, and it's a time, you know, with the young ones, and I really appreciate the opportunity to actually have that time with the family, because it's not often you can get everybody, well, not everybody, but more than normal together and do something meaningful in our community, so, thank you for that.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments? Kara?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. I was painting picnic tables at Lyons Park with my daughter, and it was a really fun day, and it was great to work with all the other volunteers that were there, and I've since taken my daughter back to the park a couple of times, and she seems very proud of the work that she's done, so, which is really what it's all about, is just like taking pride in your community.
She has an interest in it.
Yeah, so, it was a great day, it was really great to see all the people that came out to work on behalf of the city.
I just think it's a great program, and I'm looking forward to next year doing even bigger and better, so, but I really want to thank all of you, especially the organizers, it's a hard, hard task.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Yeah, we were all around, my wife and I, in fact, and our city engineer was part of our crew as well. We were on the creek right here, and then over to Lumpson Park for a little bit, and then we ended up at, where was our last spot? Not Rotary Park.
Lyons?
Lyons Park, no. But we were spreading bark, and we had a good workout that day, but it was just incredible to see so many of the community out doing work, and when you run into just people walking by, you know, they were thankful and, you know, wanted to know what was going on, so it was just great to see everybody come out, and you just wanted to express my appreciation to all the service organizations that came together to do this, it was really great.
Vice Mayor? It was Duffy Park.
Duffy Park, there we go.
Good old Duffy Park. All right, let me go ahead and read this. "We have a certificate for each one of these organizations, and a certificate of appreciation is presented to Bayside Church of Placerville, Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, Cold Springs Community Church, Green Valley Community Church, the Seventh-day Adventist Church, Solid Rock Church, and Vantage Point Church." So, we thank all of those organizations, and I have a certificate for each one of them, so whoever's in the audience this evening, I'd be happy to come down in just a moment and present that to you. It is from this, from the council and the city manager's office thanking you for your donation of your time and effort to the city. As everyone knows, there is an endless list of small and large projects that need to get done, and always a shortage of funding and labor to have that, have those things happen. And as you heard, the inspiration, we now have an inspired five-year-old that is concerned about her picnic tables at Lyons Park, and that's where it can start. It can be just that simple. And so, that is just the wonderful adoption, if you will, of our community that we absolutely need and depend on and greatly appreciate. So, on behalf of the, all the residents of Placerville, thank you to all the organizations that I just read for their Rise and Shine efforts in Placerville. So, with that, I'm not quite sure who's here, but if you'd like, we can do a picture. We have, the city engineer also doubles as a city photographer.
I mean, you need to turn around.
It was really fun to have our city council serving with us and a lot of the staff members, we really appreciate that. It was exciting to have our numbers almost double this year, and to work together with more, you know, just broaden our reach and our community and give more people the experience of serving, which is, I think, just helps people feel, helps build their self-esteem, and it helps them, others that benefit from that feel loved and appreciated too, and they appreciate the service that's rendered, so, thank you for being so willing to continue this project.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? That's your opportunity. All right, well, again, we thank you very much for your donation of your time and efforts. We cannot run this community without our community members' involvement, and this is an example of that, how important it is. So, again, thank you very much, and again, we look forward to another event, a successful event next year, so, again, thank you.
Mayor, could I just add one comment? Sorry, I should have done a certain -- I wanted to express my appreciation to Terry Zeller and his department, who provided all the backup support for this, hauling bark and collecting tools and handing out tools and barricades and et cetera. This was a little bit of a challenge for us this year because we had all new staff that didn't, weren't here last year when we did this, so, a little bit of a learning experience for Terry and for Tyder Gilbert, our Public Works Superintendent. Both did an outstanding job, made sure that we had what we needed and got things going. We learned, we learned some things we can do better next year, obviously, but I want to really thank our park staff, limited as it may be for all the work that they did getting this going, they did a great job, so.
Thank you, Cleve. All right, thank you very much again. All right, now we'll move back to the three points. Announcements and presentations to the public. Brief comments by city councilmembers. I will start with the vice mayors this evening, Mr. Saragosa.
Yes, so, I attended the Fair Board Lunch, the annual Fair Board Lunch with the county and city staff, also the neighborhood chat on our new fire ordinance, and again, I want to thank the community for coming out for that, it was well-attended, I thought we had a really good, really good conversation, and we're moving the ball forward there. And then, lastly, what we just talked about, the Rise and Shine Cleanup Day, which was great, and yeah, I want to thank Terry and his folks, especially for letting me use one of their gas-powered weed eaters. That was awesome, so, thank you for that, but I think that's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Thomas?
I've got a list I'm going to run down real quick.
Okay.
Well, the police officers' award dinner, thank you for the invitation and attendance, and you were there with me, and it was nice to see the participation and the camaraderie among, amongst the officers there and their family, and it was, it was a great time, and the award, are you going to talk about that?
Yes, you should.
Since I brought it up.
Which award did you want me to talk about?
The Officer of the Year Award.
Oh, for Officer Litzias.
Yes.
So, yeah, we recognized him for his efforts in dealing with our homeless population in a compassionate way, where, as I've said many times before, a council and others, arrest is not always the option that best suits the individual, and he's found a lot of creative ways, which we have implemented throughout the department in dealing with these folks, and help, trying to point them in the direction that gets them the help they need, that may or may not include incarceration. So, he just took it upon himself, and he has a lot of success stories that I'll talk about later in agenda items.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
You did a much better job than I would have. The fair luncheon was really a good opportunity to understand what's going on, the opportunities there, as well as their challenges, and like Vice Mayor Saragosa said, the community fire, the community chat on fire, or that program was well-attended, and I really appreciated all the, all the input. I attended the PDA meeting, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes, we had a good time walking a mile in her shoes. I wouldn't say it was a good time, I have a whole new appreciation, of course, for the third year in a row, although my feet didn't hurt quite as bad this time. And that was to support the Center for Violence-Free Relationships, and they raised, I think, thirty, over $30,000 that day from our community, and I think it's a great opportunity to support that organization. Not a great opportunity, but an opportunity.
Important time.
Yes, an important opportunity.
A painful opportunity.
Yes, let's go with that. Let's see, I have had the opportunity to work on my defensible space, and I've worked on about two acres, and I have to tell you that I have spent six days and with extra help, 70 hours, eight hours of chipper, and extremely painful body at the end of it, and I have to tell you, I, I'm concerned for those in our community that cannot do this, and we can talk about this another time, but I felt as, being in our position, I needed to at least do my part and look at my property, and it was significant, and, and so, I have a new appreciation and new understanding, also, future comments on that whole issue. One of the, probably the most interesting things I did in the last couple of weeks was the Chamber Luncheon, and Don Ashton was the speaker there, and made me late for the Budget Workshop, but I was there, and one quote that he had, and I'll just keep this brief, "We can no longer be a small, we can no longer be small and rural with a high level of service." And he's talking about the expectations of our community and the level of service that we're, that people are asking for with the challenges that we face in the future, and there's going to be some tough decisions as we move forward, because we're going to, in the future, talk about our unfunded liabilities. So, it was, and he elaborated on that quite a bit, and it was very poignant in looking in our future. So, with that, I'm finished, but that was a, it's more for the, for the future, but it's a very good quote.
That is a good quote. Excellent quote.
And very important, I realize. Okay, I too have a full schedule. I attended the police awards night, really enjoyed it, just like the other two council people talked about, it was, I tell you, it was, it's so nice to, you know, we see our policemen in uniforms, and we think of them as a policeman, and we don't think about them having families and all these wonderful little kids, and it was just, it was just really nice to meet all the families and everybody. And I went to the fair luncheon, I went to several Amgen meetings, and then I went to Amgen.
Nobody said that, you're the first one to mention that.
I know, and it was a
I'm surprised.
It was a great success, and I'm real proud of our town once again. I know our, probably our city manager's going to have some more interesting, more interesting tales to tell you, so. Then I also, we hosted the Old City Hall Community Chat, and I have to say, I was very happy, this room was full of people and appreciated, we had two presentations, and appreciated both of them, and all the folks that came to give us their ideas, and we'll talk more about that later on. And then, that, then I went to, oh, then we had a budget meeting, we, that was interesting too, although, I love our budget meetings, everybody gets to talk about what they want and their wish list, and I wish we could fulfill the whole thing, but we, you know, so, and then I went to Placerville Drive presentation that Rebecca and the gang put on, and that was really interesting, and I didn't see a lot of people there, and I wish that when you put these meetings on for the public, that they would come to those instead of waiting until after the fact and, you know, saying what, you know. Anyway, that's another, and I think that was it.
All right.
Full schedule.
You get the award for mentioning Amgen first. Councilmember Taylor, do you have any announcements or comments this evening?
Yeah, it sounds like May's been a busy month for everybody.
Oh, my gosh.
I toured the Public Works Department with Nick Stone, thank you for that, that was interesting, saw their buildings and kind of what they do on a day-to-day basis. I also attended the Budget Workshop with my colleagues here, the Rise and Shine, as we mentioned earlier. I attended the Placerville Bike Lane Open House that Rebecca Neves put on, and also was part of the Historic City Hall Committee Presentations, and echoing Councilmember Borelli, really want to thank everyone that, it was, it was a full room on a Monday afternoon, so, really appreciate everyone that took time out of their day to come, and all the great ideas from the community members for those presentations. And I represented City Council on the 7:00 AM ride, ride to work with City Council, so that was a lot of fun, and that's, that's my list, so.
All right, thank you very much for all of that, from all the councilmembers. I'll just very quickly go through and acknowledge that, again, appreciate being invited to the Police Department's annual award Family Night, the camaraderie and fellowship, you cannot put a price on that, and it is so important and so wonderful to see that our department continues to have just an excellent level of both of those, and the good-natured, family-related activities that take place, just build a cohesive unit that works out there for the citizens. I would like to also thank all the folks that came out to the Fire Safe Chat back on April 30th, 31st, and I'd also specifically like to thank our city attorney, because he was literally in the hot seat. We had almost a full room, I, my chore was to walk around with a microphone, we managed to have a wireless mic, we've almost moved into the 20th century with some of our technology here, and Cleve Morris also, they fielded questions for almost two hours, I would say, yeah, and did a tremendous job. One of the most difficult things you can do in public service is to sit and unscripted take, respond, respond to the public, and something that is obviously so emotional as the fire hazard situation and where we're going with our ordinance, and they just, both of those gentlemen did a stellar job, but especially John, he was truly in the hot seat all night long, with legal challenges, constitutional challenges, the level of concern is wide and varied, so, but you handled it all, and so did Cleve, and I think we came away with a lot of very important public input. We are working on draft number five for the Fire Safe Ordinance. I think that's hugely important.
I think it's great.
That's four times we've taken public input, about to take it a fifth time. So, thank you both, these two gentlemen, for a long but very productive night, and then I'll just briefly say, thank you very much for everyone that participated in Amgen yesterday. There's going to be a huge list of thank yous that will have to be made, I won't try and do that this evening because I don't want to overlook anybody, but the town did absolutely put on another fantastic face. It was a Monday, well, maybe not quite the crowd that we had on a Friday, I don't understand that, but anyway, the weather was beautiful, the ride seemed to go smooth, Cleve got to ride in the VIP vehicle, so he has a lot of secrets that he'll share with us later, but thank you, and there will be more thank yous officially to come for all the efforts that went into a very successful face for Placerville in association with Amgen. So, moving on to item 3.2, I'll just briefly say that the Caltrans updates, we'll be going ahead, I'm happy to say that we'll be able to drop this item in our future agendas, but I'm happy to have one last opportunity to address this project. This could have been the nightmare project of the century, and it wasn't. I think it was a testament to Caltrans' ability to work regionally and statewide to get their message out, when they put a team together that really addresses what needs to be done. I mean, people were sending us pictures of the messages that were, don't use Highway 50, as they were going through the Bay Bridge Toll Plaza, so that's getting the message out there, and it worked. That and the fact that one week was spring break, so we got a practice week. So, there was still congestion, and there's still thank yous, obviously, that need to go to Caltrans, the team that managed that project, but also to all of our residents and all of our merchants that did deal with a lot of heavy congestion that was primarily because of the mosquito ramp being closed. So, project done, everything's back open, and hopefully, they'll never have to do that again, but much better than trying to do it in September, October, as they had originally proposed.
I do have one comment on that. At the transportation commission, we had the opportunity to, to talk to Caltrans on this project, and I requested that they return the project site to its previously, if not better than, condition.
Thank you.
And the signage, the fence, the, how they tore up our, the junipers and, you know, the tracks that they left around there, I just, I don't want them to walk away from it. I think it's important that they, you know, respect our town and
Oh, I agree.
And help us bring it back, if not better than it was.
That was going to be, before I said, "Thank you," I was going to tell them, and oh, by the way, please restore the site, and thank you very much.
It sounded to me like
We're not done yet, William.
That they are going to
They will.
To do that.
I think it's a small favor.
Rebecca's on it, I don't think we're going to have a problem, so, thank you.
Well, and we owe it to the Broadway merchants, too. That thing has been a mess up there.
For a long time.
That their, all of their clients look out from all those various businesses at, at that site, so, we need to, we need to And I had every intention, from city's perspective, to follow through with Caltrans, so, but I appreciate you bringing it up in transportation. It never hurts. With that, I would like to move on to item 3.3, we have a fun presentation this evening. We have plastic on the floor, and we don't usually do that next to the podium, but tonight we have some unusual guests, and I had requested that Sierra Wildlife Rescue come, come this evening and spend a few minutes and tell us what they do in and around, not only Placerville, but also on the western slope of Eldorado County. Back around the holidays, I received their annual little summary of their rehab efforts, and it reminded me that they are a volunteer organization that does provide a tremendous service to the residents of this county and this city, and they need our help, so I am going to ask that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to them, and if you would, please, just introduce yourself to the audience this evening and pull the microphone down. Good evening.
Thank you for having us. As you said, we're a nonprofit organization, Sierra Wildlife Rescue, and we rescue wildlife that is injured or orphaned through the whole western slope of Eldorado County. And with us today, we have Christina, we have Pam, Judy, Judy, and Diane. And when we rescue animals, sometimes we get animals in that cannot be returned to the wild because they have injuries, or they cannot survive on their own. So, we apply for a special permit to have these animals, whether it's a raptor or an animal. We have special permits to use these animals as ambassadors to teach the public about Sierra Wildlife Rescue. And one of the great things about us, we have been in existence for 25 years last year. We help the Animal Control, Caltrans, sheriffs, and Highway Patrol. We get calls from them constantly to help them get animals off the road and get people safely on their way. So, today, to make this short, I'm going to tell you real quick, we do anywhere from 800 to 1,200 animals a year, depending on what year it is and how many storms and what the weather conditions are. So, tonight, we have some special raptors to show you that are non-releasable. Judy and Judy are going to show you, two of ours, or Diane, excuse me, and Judy are going to show you some special birds.
Good evening. If you could introduce yourself and your, and your friend.
Good evening, my name is Diane, and this is Dusty. Dusty is a northern pygmy owl. She is very common to this area. She is not a baby, she looks really small, she's actually an adult that's seven years old. We know that she's seven because we got her when she was a little teeny baby about this big. Her and her brother came into Sierra Wildlife, completely covered in ashes and milkweed, and it took three days with a Q-tip to clean them both off so they could be released. Now, her brother was released because he could fly and he could eat. Dusty will not eat anything that's alive, so if you won't eat anything that's alive, and you're a raptor and you eat meat, you cannot survive in the wild. Also, she can only fly about five feet, and then she flutters to the ground. Now, we don't know if that's neurological, or if it has something to do with being, going through the fire, or what the situation was. In the wild, being a raptor, she eats anything that's meat, so she'll eat crickets and lizards and mice and everything she can. At home, she eats three to four very small mice per day, and she can eat them whole very easily, they go in head first, she swallows them, or if she wants, yeah, she can grab them with her talons and rip them apart with her beak. She has that option.
That's four a day?
Uh huh, three to four a day. Oh, okay, I'm done, that was Dusty. I just want to say, also, manager of the baby bird nursery, and we need volunteers.
Thank you, Diane, thank you, Dusty. Who do we have up next?
My name is Judy, and this beautiful little guy right here is named Lionel. He was named after Lionel Trains, he was found close to some railroad tracks. I would like to add the Police Department, because I get many calls from your officers who pick up little animals, so I wanted to make sure that you guys got mentioned. Lionel is a great-horned owl, he is the largest owl in the county. Lionel is a great horned owl. He is the largest owl in the county. And he's sort of known as the coyote of the owl world because he has adapted to living with man. And that makes him really kind of special because most animals do not adapt and live well with people. These birds don't come out normally together, in case you hadn't figured that out. Anyway, Lionel gets three mice, big mice, a night, and it's one of the real reasons that having these guys around is so important and is our education message. Because these guys provide natural rodent patrol and control for everybody. This guy will eat three mice a night. We have barn owls who will eat seven. And when they have seven babies, that's 49 a night that get taken up. So, the raptors are really, really important. He looks bigger than he is. He only weighs about two pounds. And I believe him to be a male only based on his size. He's small. In the raptor world, the guys are the little ones. The ladies get the size. And they think that that is because the females do most of the raising of the babies. One of the things that's really kind of interesting about these guys is they're very lazy, and so they always lay their eggs first in somebody else's nest. And so, we, these are the first babies that we get in the season, and we're currently, Christie there, has three baby great horned owls that we will be putting into a large flight cage and then getting released. The wineries love our barn owls when we get them in for rodent control naturally. And down in the valley, the farmers clamor to have the barn owls released. There's actually a program called RATS, which is Raptors Are the Solution, that you can look up online that talks about how effective it is to use these guys for rodent control. Do you have any questions about Lionel?
Thank you. Judy, any questions? We're not happy.
This is Paul Beatty. My name is Judy. Also
Judy, could you pull the mic up a little bit?
My name is also Judy. And this is Herbert. We named him after Herbert Green Middle School. We got a call. They were having a soccer game, and he was landing on the kids' heads. This is a bird that is imprinted. He thinks he's one of us. So, we're guessing someone had him illegally and didn't know what they were doing. When a bird hatches from the egg, first thing it sees is mama feeding it, so they did that wrong. We're very careful and would never bring our wild birds that we're releasing out into the public. This is, American kestrel is the smallest of our falcons. When you're looking at the birds flying, the hawks fly and soar in circles, the vultures are kind of tipsy. These guys are the divers. They dive really fast, kill with their talons, rip up the food and eat it. Once an animal's imprinted, there's no going back, so he's with me forever. I am his wife, and he attacks my husband. So, that's the way it goes with imprinted birds. We know this is a male. This is the only raptor. We can tell the male from the female. The male is the only one that has the gray color. But, you know, people don't think robin, tohy, because it's a small bird, but that's, that's a raptor. If you have a bird feeder, these guys are going to be the ones that swoop down and take those songbirds. Any questions?
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Herbert. And up next, come on over to the
We know that Zag, it's a male, because Zag was a falconer's bird, and he was attacked, chasing a jackrabbit by some rottweilers. And the gentleman loved him so much, he did take him to the foremost vet in the western United States and spent thousands of dollars saving this bird. As you can see, we use him especially with young children, teaching them that it's okay if you have a handicap and you're not perfectly cosmetically correct, that you can be wonderful and have a great life and participate in society as someone important. Zag always says, "Hi, say hi." One-winged Zag. And also, if you can see, he is missing a toe and a talon. And that was because he swooped down to get a squirrel to eat, and the squirrel turned around and bit his toe off. And see how big the talons are? So, we teach young children never to feed squirrels, especially in Coloma Park where there are hundreds of squirrels. Their teeth are so sharp, if it could bite off a raptor's talon and toe, think what it would do to your hand. So, Zag is a perfect example of why you should never touch wildlife. Just enjoy them. He is one of our favorite birds. He does talk. Talk.
Say something.
Can you hear him talking? He talks to the kids. And anyway, Zag is 19 years old. I have had him since 2002. In the wild, these birds live anywhere from five to seven years. In captivity, they can live 35 to 40 years. This is Zag. Say goodbye. Thank you for having us, Serra Wildlife. Appreciate you allowing to come to you.
Come over to the microphone, please, so we can, we want to make sure we get everything that you're saying on our
I just said, thank
So, we'll be on YouTube.
Thank you for having us.
Are there any questions?
Birds have personalities, just like we do.
Now, is there any
Some days they behave and some days they don't. There you go.
Any particular place people should go to look for information on Sierra Wildlife?
Serra Wildlife has a website. We also have a baby bird nursery at 777 Pleasant Valley Road in Diamond Springs. We are open from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. We appreciate it if people could be there by 6:00 to drop off birds. And in that nursery, we have shifts that last anywhere from two to four hours, and we do about 600 baby birds. So, we need lots of volunteers. And we need financial support through membership, donations, and we have fundraisers. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would like to thank you for the presentation this evening, especially all the guests. There's an awful lot of mice that now need to go, be very worried this evening. But it's an excellent example of how we just leave things alone. They will tend to take care of themselves.
I'd like to remind everybody, remember the old-fashioned mousetrap? It's got the slap, and it breaks the neck, and, okay. We really want people to stop buying the decon and using that because it's a tertiary killer. Let's say a bird ate that mouse that died, and it's a horrible death. You melt from the inside. Then whoever ate the bird dies, and up to whoever ate that dies, and it just goes on and on and on, and they are the solution to our rodent problem.
Thank you very much. Yeah, it was, I got their card last year, and they had people bring in all sorts of creatures. Fawns, squirrels, foxes, coyotes, skunks, pigeons, doves, possums, water birds.
We do all the animals in Eldorado County, except for cougar goes to Southern California, bear goes to Tahoe. But we do everything else.
Thank you very much.
Could I ask just a real quick question?
They have a question.
Do you have, do you have need for, like, old towels and stuff like that?
No, we got lots of towels. Thank you.
Okay, because I did hear that, you know, that
There was, there was times, and we've got donations of that. What we like to look for is building materials. We spend an awful lot of money buying wire and lumber to build cages because we're rehabbing most of the animals in our homes, but it gets to a point where they need to go outside into what we call a release cage, and those can get very expensive, and I'd say that's what we need the most help with right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I just remind everybody that there's always, the thought that caused me to request this was people often on social media will say, "I found a little this or a little that," and they, there'll be 10 suggestions to call Sierra Wildlife, which is great, but you guys need support, too. And there, you need volunteers and supplies and donations to help be able to respond to all those calls. So, thank you for delivering that message this evening and all your ambassadors.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item 3.4, acknowledge and file the annual financial report and independent auditor's report. Mr. Warren, did you have any, any wild creatures that you would like?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. That's a tough act to follow, but here we go. So, tonight, we have Vanessa Burke, CPA, who's the engagement partner with Poon Group to present your annual audit report for fiscal year 2017, 2018. With that, I'll hand it over to Vanessa.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I wish I was Johnny Carson right now and could actually hold one of those. Sorry that I was taking pictures, but wow, that was, this is probably the coolest council meeting I think I've been to all year. The fact that you had wild animals in here. So, I'm really, really pleased to be here tonight. I'm Vanessa Burke. I'm the engagement partner for City Placerville. Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council, staff, as well as the citizens that are here to hear our comments. This is actually my first year on the engagement. I joined the Poon Group about two years ago as the partner for their Northern California practice, and so as part of that process, have rotated onto the engagement. I hear I have about five or 10 minutes to go through a 113-page document. So, I've got a short, brief presentation to get you to the really exciting stuff, not as exciting as what just happened here, but we'll hopefully get you out of here at a reasonable hour. So, quickly, I'm going to go through the PowerPoint and then open it up to questions at the end. Usually, we go over the scope of work for this year. It hasn't changed from prior years that we've had out here, and so I'll quickly go over that. We talk about our, and AUC, nobody knows what that means, but that's our professional standards under the AICPA that governs our work and what we're required to communicate to you as those charged with governance. We'll go briefly through the audit results. I'll give a quick overview of the financial statements, talk a little bit about your pension and OPEB information, because that's such a big number, and then open it up to questions. So, our, sorry about that, our firm is really engaged to perform three services for you here. One is to perform the financial statement audit, which is a larger document that you have in front of you. The second is to perform a compliance audit over your federal expenditures. And that kicks in when you exceed over $750,000 a year in federal expenditures, and in your case, you do. And so, we're required to go through other additional procedures over internal controls and things like that related to your federal spending. The last item, as you know, is your GAN limit, which you adopt during your budget process, which will be upcoming. We look at the one for the year that has just passed, and we perform certain limited, agreed-upon procedures related to the GAN limit, just to ensure that you're within those requirements, state requirements. Our standards are a little more lengthy as to the required communications. We should talk later, there will be a couple of slides on our responsibility as opposed to management's responsibility for the audit and the financial statements. We'll go over significant findings, and then the other, one of the other required communications is to talk to you about any significant accounting policies, significant estimates or disclosures within that 113-page report. So, the one change this year in your accounting policies and your disclosures is we implemented, or staff implemented, Dave did, with his team, the OPEB standard, which is GASB statement number 75. And so, there is a prior period restatement. That isn't an error in the financial statements. That's an allowed correction of the financial statement as a result of implementation of new standards by our governing body, which would be the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Significant estimates within the financial statements, we like to bring that to your attention because it involves a level of judgment and estimation and assumptions in there. Obviously, the investment in fair value, investments stated at fair value, fair value in and of itself is an estimate of the market value of trading investments. Your depreciation on your capital assets is an investment because there is assumption and estimation on the useful life of the asset, the depreciable life, you know, how long it's going to last you, what its intended use is. And then last is the net pension and OPEB liabilities have a significant level of assumptions and estimates within them. The city is in CalPERS, and so CalPERS actuaries provide that information to us, but we do look at that as part of our audit. The footnotes that I think are the most significant, if you were to read anything in the report, I would suggest, besides the management's discussion and analysis, taking a look at your significant accounting policies within there. The PERS and the OPEB footnote seven and eight, any contingency footnote, the PPFA bond defaults, and note 14, the prior period adjustment is related to the implementation of the new accounting standard. Audit results. So, everybody likes to use the word clean opinion. We like to say that you received an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of opinion that you can receive. And what that means is that these financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, that those policies that were implemented by management have been consistently applied between periods. Estimates and those assumptions are reasonable in those circumstances, and that the disclosures are properly included in the financial statements to make those useful. And then the city complied in all material respects with the compliance requirements that could have a direct and material effect on its major programs. Other requirements were required to disclose under our professional standards, or whether there are any disagreements with management, and we didn't have any of those. Whether there are any deficiencies in internal control that we would need to report to you. If those were significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we would need to bring those to your attention. The internal control opinion is included in your book, and there are none that we need to report to you this year. There were no accounting errors or irregularities. And then in the GAN limit, which was the third item I talked about as part of our scope, there were no exceptions or findings related to those procedures. As for responsibility, management and those charged with governance have the responsibility for the financial statements, for presenting those in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles that are in the United States, to adopt sound accounting policies, establish and maintain your internal controls. They have to provide us lots of evidence during the audit process, and we have a very, I know he's nodding his head. Have a very lengthy checklist of things that we go through as part of the audit to corroborate and confirm information, not only within the city, but outside of the city. We use third-party confirmation process. And then also, it's management's responsibility to present the financials free of error or misstatements due to error or fraud, as well as to establish internal controls to prevent and detect fraud. Our responsibilities are to perform your audit in accordance with our auditing standards generally accepted in the United States. Those are our professional standards, as well as you're subject to what we call the Yellow Book or the GAO, the General Accounting Offices, government auditing standards. And that's because you're a governmental agency and you're getting federal awards. Annually, we're also required to communicate to those charged with governance. We have meetings with you. We have meetings with management, and we communicate to you in this meeting, the results of our audit and the information in this presentation satisfies those requirements. Also, as part of our audit planning, we have to look at audit risk. So, we look at risk to the organization from a financial reporting standpoint, and we rank that risk and develop our audit procedures corresponding to those risks that we identify in the audit. Those areas that are subject to more estimation have a higher level of risk than those that are not. Last, we have to determine that you presented fairly, and then we render our opinion on the financial statements, which I just previously stated was an unmodified opinion. So, we'll talk a little bit about, oops, I think I went ahead. So, the overview of the financial statements, really, the financial report is composed of several sections. I won't go through this in detail. The very first part, or two pages of it, are our independent auditor's report. The rest of the document is essentially management, and here at City Placerville, I applaud you for preparing your own financial statements. That's pretty uncommon in the industry, but Dave and his team do a very great job at putting that together. Oftentimes, we have to assist and help management with that, but in your case at Placerville, we do not. The management discussion and analysis section is right after our independent auditor's report. I like to call that to your attention. It's unaudited. We do read that information, and we compare it to the financial statements. If you didn't want to read the whole 113 pages, that's management's opportunity to talk about the financials in, I would call, lay terms so that you can understand all of the numbers that are possessed within your financial statements. You also have within your financials required supplementary information related to You also have within your financials required supplementary information related to budgetary comparisons, notes to those, as well as your schedule of your proportionate share of your net pension liability, your contributions, and your OPEB amounts. In addition, there's additional supplementary information where you can see non-major fund information, as well as budgetary comparison schedules for those that are non-major funds. And a major fund is defined as those that are towards the front of the basic financial statements and are called out separately and meet a materiality threshold that we compute or are elected to be presented as major by management. The single audit report is the other smaller book that you have in there besides GAN. It's a very small, little packet. This is the audit of the federal expenditures of federal awards, and in this, there are two opinions. One is the internal control over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. The second is our opinion on compliance over your major programs. Your major program, for purposes of the federal audit, is your highway planning and construction grants. And so we took a look at that as your program and basically audited it for internal control and compliance. In addition, you can see all of that listed out in the Schedule of Expenditure of Federal Awards. If you had had any findings and questioned costs in this year or in the prior year, that would be presented in that report, but I'm pleased to say and state that you do not have any of those. So if, we are going to quickly go through the government-wide financial statements and the general fund. This is really the presentation of the City of Placerville on a government-wide basis. That's a full accrual basis, meaning your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities are pulled in, as opposed to the fund statements, which are towards the middle and back of the book, and those are on a modified accrual basis. So this is where your capital assets come in and your pension obligations, as well as your OPEB obligations. You can see this is on a government-wide basis, split between governmental activities and business-type activities. Business activities, type activities are those where you have charges for services, such as sewer, water, et cetera. Your total assets at the end of June 30, 2018, were 136.4 million. That includes the deferred outflow of resources of 4.4 million. The deferred outflow of resources and the deferred inflow of resources are related to your pension obligation, as well as your OPEB. Your total liabilities, including deferred inflow, are 79.5 million, and overall, your net position at the end of the year is 56.9 million, almost 60 million, 57 million dollars. And again, that's an increase, if you look through the MDA, of 2.2 million over the prior year. Total net position increased this year on the governmental activities by about 1.6 million, and business-type activities increased by about 400,000, to make up the total of 2 million. And you can see that here on the next page, at the very bottom, you can see the change in that position of the 1.6 million, 400 for the overall, at 2 million. Within this, this is your summary statement of activities on a government-wide basis. This looks at transactions for the whole year, whereas a statement of net position is a balance at a point in time at June 30 of 2018. This accumulates all your transactions for the year. For purposes of this presentation, really, the general revenues increased slightly because of the local sales tax received in the current year, and in addition, your general revenues over on your business-type activities, those include your Measure H adopted in 2010 and Measure L. If you were to look at this schedule backing up, capital grants and operating grants and contributions decreased this year over the prior year. Obviously, you had more grants in prior years than this year, so you see that flow through in the current year. The next slide, this is really the city's general fund. This is presented on a modified accrual basis, so you don't see those long-term assets and long-term liabilities here. This is really looking at your current resources available for your general fund operations. Total assets at the end of the year were 2.6 million, liabilities of about 715,000, and your net fund balance at the end of the year was 1.8, or almost 1.9 million. The next page, page 19, you can see here, this is again presenting the statement of revenue expenditures and changes in fund balance for the year. This is again, all of the transaction activity accumulated for the city's general fund. You can see total revenues of 8.5 million. Your taxes represent the lion's share of that at about 5.5 million. You can see total expenditures of 8.6 million, and that's comprised of really, heavily, your general government and public safety, which are your core functions, as well as you see your other costs for highways and streets, community development, park and rec. Total change in fund balance this year was a slight decrease in fund balance of about $276,000, but in the presentation of the general fund, this is a modified accrual, so your capital outlay actually goes through the general fund.
Vanessa, if I may, so it appears that the city is not living within its means there. It's showing a deficit of 275,000. However, the devil's in the details. For example, the city chose to utilize some of its fund balance or owner's equity to purchase the property next to the police department. That was $102,000. That came right out of your fund balance, so that's part of that $275,000 deficit. The other piece is the city chose to use $193,000 in fund balance for capital projects, like the roof at Old City Hall. The other thing, so if you take those things into consideration, you would actually end up with a $19,000 surplus if you didn't do those things. However, you chose to use some of that fund balance because we had some good years in the past. The other thing to note is, we had kind of a bad year for general liability claims. We had $134,000 in general liability claims in fiscal year 17-18. So I just wanted to point those things out to explain that deficit.
Thank you, Dave.
So next, we'll just talk briefly about a couple key financial indicators. This is really focused on the city's governmental activities and taking a look at your net cost of services to tax payments. This is on that government-wide statement of activities presentation and kind of consolidated down. So you can see that your total expenses for your governmental services are around 12.6 million. If we back out those other programmatic revenues that you use to cover those costs of services, which are things like charges for services, people are renting your rec rooms, your parks, your facilities, other various charges for services. Your net cost of services for governmental activities is around 8.9 million. You're bringing in approximately 10 million in taxes, which is more than sufficient to cover those net costs of services at about 88%. And so you're, I've seen lots of worse situations than that, so congratulations to all of you for managing well. The next page is really, we always like to take a look at the general fund reserves to see what's available to fund annual expenditures on an ongoing basis. Currently, your general fund has approximately 1.6 million in what I would call available or available for contingencies and things like that, the rainy day fund. Your annual expenditures in your general fund are around 8.9 million, so your general fund reserve ratio is 18.7%, this year. I know GFOA publicizes a kind of a best practice at looking at about two months of expenditures that can vary depending upon public agency, depending upon your spending, but when you're drawing down on your reserves and the reserve policy where you might do those one-time projects you talked about, you have more than sufficient reserves to cover those. And so, you know, two months is around 16.67%. The next slide is really a presentation, and we call it the Pension Standard. This is GASB 68. This was implemented two years ago for the City of Placerville. You're in the cost-sharing plan at CalPERS. You can see you're in both the miscellaneous and the safety plans for total net pension liability, using a discounted rate at 7.15% at the end of June for 18, or at the end of the measurement period for 18.4 million total liability. Your funded ratio for both miscellaneous and safeties around 64 to 67%. Now, GASB 68, when it was published, required an added disclosure in the financial statements for public agencies to include what a sensitivity analysis would be, which is if CalPERS decided to change its discount rate assumptions by 1% to the positive or to the negative, what would that impact be on your overall net pension liability? And you can see that if they dropped their discount rate from 7.15% to 6.15%, your total pension liability would increase from 18.4 million to 25.8 million. If the inverse happened, which I don't anticipate, that's going to happen in the near future for the, for CalPERS to increase their discount rate to 8.15%, you can see that your net pension liability drops to 12.4 million dollars. And so any 1% swing can have a significant impact on the public agencies. We don't anticipate CalPERS going to make any substantial changes, as it's still going through its revisions to its policies to adopt the discount rates that they're at now. On the next slide is really the similar presentation. It's also required the OPEB standard was implemented in this fiscal year, in June 30, 2018, to actually record the liability on the books of the public agencies. Your total OPEB liability is using a discount rate of 3.62%, is sitting at 3.5 million dollars at the end of June 30 of 2018. Your funded ratio is 0%, meaning you're not advanced funding your OPEB liability, meaning setting aside funds, you're on a pay-go basis. If you were to have a change in your OPEB liability due to that sensitivity analysis, you can see your liability could range anywhere from 3.2 to 3.9 million. And last is our single audit. We talked about auditing the federal awards when you exceed over $750,000 in expenditures. You've doubled that, you're 101.5 million dollars in total federal expenditures, and of that, your highway planning and construction grants were around 1.3 million in 2018. So our total tested, we tested that as a cluster, is around 89%. So our coverage is over 89%, and you didn't have any findings. Most of that funding was related to the Placerville interchange phase two off-ramp, as well as improvements for crosswalk, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, et cetera, for Broadway, and then the rest was other, other grants, other miscellaneous grants. With that, I would be remiss not to thank Andrew Roth, who is the senior manager on the engagement and spends quite a bit of time with Dave and his team, as well as all of the staff that were here, and again, management and their staff have been very cooperative during the audit and getting us the information we need to get this report completed and out to you, so I'd like to thank them as well. And I'll go ahead and, that concludes my prepared remarks, and I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you very much, Vanessa. We appreciate you having, having you here this evening, and we're glad that you enjoyed the earlier presentation. That was a little special event for us, too. All right, that was a tremendous amount of information. I think it was one of the best reports that I've seen. In fact, I complimented Dave on it earlier in the week. Very thorough, very excellent, excellently produced. We have some new council members up here, so we'll see if we have some new questions on this, because this is kind of their first shot at what we did last year. So I will open it up with, to my left, Vice Mayor Saragosa. Did you have any questions for Vanessa or Dave?
A question, yes. A question on the CalPERS rate. What's been the, sort of the trajectory there over the last couple of years? I mean, obviously, it doesn't really go in the other direction, but how much movement has there been there?
They were dropping it in small increments of like a quarter percent, so really, and it's 7.15, the .15 is really their administration built into that discount rate, so they're really at a discount rate of 7%. But we saw it go from, you know, 7.75% over a couple-year period down to 7. I don't anticipate it dropping much further than that, though I think they, I would call it quantitative easing, if I was to explain it. It's kind of like a quantitative easing. They knew that public agencies couldn't absorb the costs. The League of California Cities hired Bartel and Associates to come out and do an actuarial study of all public agencies, and in looking at the contribution rates that are going to have to go in as a result of the current state at where it's at, we do anticipate with other, you know, COLA and cost of living increases, that pension contributions are going to basically double in about seven years. That was the outcome of their report, and I know many agencies are struggling to kind of figure out what they're going to do next with that. The economy has been good lately. The returns at CalPERS have been, the last two years have been good, but they had some rough years for a very long time during the recession. So we're going to have to, you know, I think our recessions are longer, our trenches are becoming longer, as we're becoming more of a global economy.
Thank you.
On slide 22, you talked about general fund reserve ratio, and I was curious, you said we had a really good one, which, thank you, Dave, and previous councils. What is the range of a good? You said that ours was good, and you've seen a lot worse. What is that range that you see?
Well, I actually was the chief financial officer for City of Stockton and took them through their municipal bankruptcy.
Well.
I spent four years turning them around, and what we saw there was they never exceeded a reserve balance prior to bankruptcy of 6%. And that was not enough to weather those external factors that hit them. You can go through 6% pretty quickly. I have seen some cities as high as 25% and 27%, and, you know, obviously, it's a balance between providing services to your community versus setting aside money for rainy day and those external factors, or even internal factors that you're, maybe not aware might happen. I think you're in a decent range for the reserve. You know, that's kind of the range I've seen. I would say 6% is probably not a good idea, but it's worth a discussion, and I'm sure Dave's had this discussion many a time with you all, on what would be an appropriate reserve level, and it can vary depending upon the activity of the city. High-growth cities might need to have a much higher ratio because they're in a high growth. If you're kind of a stable, flat city and not a lot of growth, you can kind of narrow it in, but, you know, we have some cities that are growing at rapid paces. It's really hard to pinpoint what's right for you, but you can consider all those external factors and internal factors that may drive a change in that rate of, you know, if something could go wrong, what, how much would we need to have set aside?
Thank you.
Karen, you have any questions?
I don't really have any questions, but I would like to just make a comment and thank Dave and Cleve and our department heads for prudently managing the city's finances and assets, doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Patty?
Kind of along the same lines. I was going to say, we can always count on Dave. He just pulls us through all the time. We get mad at him and call him cheapskate and all these horrible words, but this pays, it pays off, as this shows.
I've never called him a cheapskate. Financially conservative.
Okay.
Fiscally responsible.
Fiscally responsible.
All right, well, now, these are, this is the evening where we have our accounting firm, we have Dave here, we have the completion of last fiscal year. That was going to probably be my question to Dave. This pretty much wraps up 2018, correct?
That's correct, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that your engineering department and your police department, which have federal funds that they have to manage, do an excellent job managing those. In the engineering department, there's a lot of checks and balances, a lot of documents they have to process to keep those grants in check, certified payroll, someone's making sure our contractors meet their obligations when it comes to single audit. So that's, part of our success is their success in managing our grants, so I want to thank them.
Well, I was going to mention the engineering department, but I hadn't thought about the police department mentioning them. I wasn't quite sure, but no, seriously, very true. And I was going to bring the point up that this is also the audit that's very important, that we are in compliance with all of our federal grants, funds. There were no exceptions found, and so we move forward yet with another successful year behind us. So if there's any other questions, this is, I thought they'd dig into the numbers a little bit more, but Patty and I have been up here for a few years now, and we've been through these, we went through the Great Recession. Dave brought us through the Great Recession.
These numbers look a lot better.
Yes, this is, this is all just wonderful fresh air to see this. Did you have anything else that you'd like to share with the council on what you've perceived as how we're, how we're operating?
You know, no, you know, we would bring, obviously, we do always identify things that don't rise to the level that they would have to be brought here, and we talk about improvements all the time with Dave. I think we have a great working relationship. He calls us when he has accounting questions, and that's an important relationship to have with your auditor, that your client is willing to call you and ask you your advice before they implement something, instead of way later after it's too late to fix it. And so we really appreciate our relationship with your staff, as well as we've been your auditor for many years, and I'm pleased and honored to be here tonight, so thank you.
Thank you.
I live just down the road.
Oh, perfect. All right, any other questions? Cleve, did you have anything you wanted to add? Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, sir.
All right, very well, that, the lawyer doesn't want to say anything. Thank you very much for your time this evening. We really appreciate it and all your time that you spent working with our staff. Critically important.
No motion? Okay.
Mr. Horn, did you have any final comment?
Just want to thank you for all the kind comments.
They're well deserved, sir.
We'll be right, we'll jump into budget here soon, showing you the bottom line, so.
You know, the budget never goes away. It just always seems like it's on our agenda for one reason or another. But, it's important. We got to stay on top of that.
We haven't even adopted the agenda for tonight. All right, well, thank you very much for that. I wonder how many mice have been eaten by now, though? Probably two or three. All right, moving on to item 3.5. Presentation from the Eldorado Disposal Agency regarding changes to recycling programs and review of an annual performance measures and a potential rate increase. Good evening. Thank you for being patient. Now, hopefully, you found the Raptors enjoyable also. They are recycling at their finest.
Well, I'm thinking that we need some of those at, at our material recovery facility. They could certainly help with some of the rodents that we occasionally get there.
If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself for the benefit of our home audience?
Yes, my name is Sue Vandalinder and I am the Divisional Vice President for Waste Connections in California. And I bring with me tonight Sarah Vira. Sarah and I will be doing this presentation together. And Sarah is our Sustainability Coordinator. So, this presentation will have a couple of parts. Thank you for, for having us. I appreciate that very much, council members. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the state of recycling and we'll also be doing our annual presentation this evening as well. But, I wanted to preface the presentation by talking a little bit about our relationship. So, we've had a very longstanding relationship, over a decade, actually. I've worked with many of you. And it's, it's, you know, we've been able, over that time period, to absorb changes in state law as they come through. And, you know, we've seen changes, as you have, from carb compliance with our vehicles to stormwater prevention programs that we have to put into place, most recently, labor law changes. And so, the state is, you know, marching toward a 75% diversion goal, which means that they are looking for us to basically remove 75% of all tons out of the landfill by the year 2020. So, that's a pretty lofty goal. You know, we generally hover as a state somewhere around 50% to 60%. So, we have a ways to go. Most recently, as you'll recall, we instituted the organics, the organics program, where the state actually said, you know, at a certain threshold of generation of waste, thou must recycle our food waste from restaurants, green waste from, from multifamily complexes, et cetera. There has to be a program. We have to get this material out of the landfill. So, that came to us within the last couple of years. Sarah's been very instrumental in meeting with commercial businesses and working very hard to, to adopt the program on behalf of the city. Worked very closely with Pierre. So, I just kind of wanted to kind of set the stage that way. I will tell you, in, in my over 30 years in this industry, I've never seen a change like we're seeing with recycling today. And actually, this change started a few years ago. So, I'm going to go into that in, in a few minutes. We, you know, we will be coming back in a couple of weeks today as just a presentation. So, we'll be coming back in, in two weeks' time for a, an official rate hearing. But, I wanted to walk you through the why behind what we're requesting tonight. The other thing I wanted to mention with regard to the recycling programs, you know, for many years, we've been able to institute programs, recycling programs, both residentially and commercially, without having to charge a fee for those, for those programs. We've been able to absorb the cost of those programs by the commodity revenue that we were able to generate through those programs. As you're going to see in a few minutes, that there is no longer a plus side to that commodity revenue that helps us cover those programs. So, we'll, we'll delve into that a little bit. So, without further ado, I'd like to ask Sarah to come up. And while she does that, Sarah, do you have your handouts? So, I'm actually just going to, John, I'm just going to hand these to you if that's okay? And you can pass these around. This is an article that we put in the local paper back in March. It's actually a newsletter about the state of recycling. So, we've been working very feverishly, Sarah has and the team that, that is with me tonight, working very hard to make sure that we're doing outreach. These are some magnets that talk about the do's and don'ts of recycling. And Sarah's going to take you through that, but I wanted to make sure you had these, so.
Thank you very much, Sue. Yeah, so as Sue said, my name is Sarah Vira. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator at Eldorado Disposal. I really enjoy working with the community in Placerville, so thanks for having us here today. We're going to talk about two significant challenges we've seen in the industry. Both of these challenges have occurred at the same time. The first one is we've really seen a drastic change of the materials in the waste stream. We've seen increasingly difficult packaging to recycle. This adds to kind of the, or it's been creating confusion in the recycling stream. So, we're going to talk about that challenge. And we're also going to talk about the challenges with the markets. And as Sue touched on, the challenges of being able to sell the material that we've been collected. That's been an increasing challenge that we've seen. So, the first, our changing waste stream. Can anyone think about a product that used to be sold in glass that maybe has been sold in plastic now? Oh, yeah? Any, anything you want to add, like the type of package or?
There used to be a lot of glass.
A lot of glass, yeah. So, milk is a big one that people tell me quite frequently, milk. We used to see being sold in glass, now being sold in plastic containers. We've seen a recent shift as well to more complicated plastic packaging. So, can we think of something that maybe used to be sold in a rigid container that's now sold in what we call a flexible plastic pouch?
A lot of that.
What was that, sorry?
There was a lot, there's a lot of that.
There's a lot of that, yeah. So, we're seeing really big shifts in the types of packaging that exist in the world right now. So, up on the screen here, we have a couple of images of the different types of changing packaging. So, I mentioned the flexible pouch. So, laundry detergent is a big one, just one example. The flexible pouch, it is plastic, but it's not a recyclable plastic. And we're seeing these flexible pouches replace the previously recyclable containers, the large, big laundry detergent jugs, which is made of a plastic that is recyclable. We're also seeing, you know, if you can think about baby food, it used to be sold in little jars, now is sold in a flexible, squeezable pouch. We also see layered material, which is kind of like our cartons. It's a paper that's lined with plastic. Sometimes, there's even an aluminum layer on the inside. So, it's this increasingly complex packaging that's not recyclable. We have also seen a dramatic change in the way that we consume it, consume items in our society. With the rise of e-commerce, particularly Amazon, these society shifts really impact the waste stream. So, as a result of all these changes, what we're seeing in our recycling is an increase in contamination. Contamination is items that are garbage items, but they're arriving in the recycling stream. So, in order to sell the recyclables and, you know, sell the recyclables for, for a cost or for a profit, we have to work harder to clean the material, take out the items that are not recyclable, that are ending up in the stream. The other part of our story is the availability of markets. So, for a long time, China has been the destination for recyclables. The availability of these markets, really what started the, kind of the rise of recycling in Placerville and across the state. So, when recycling started, China was the destination. China was really growing, their economy is booming, they're doing a lot of building there. They're producing a lot of the products that we are consuming in our society. And we kind of created this perfect harmony where they are producing materials that we buy. They're shipped across the Pacific on large container ships. We consume the materials and we ship back the recyclables in the container ship. So, instead of sending an empty container ship back across, we're filling them with recyclables. They're using that raw material and remaking it back into new things. So, this is kind of the existence of the markets that we've had for a long time. And we've started to see that really change in the last couple of years. So, the first kind of red flag was in 2013. I mentioned, there's been an increasing level of contamination in the recycling. So, in 2013, they kind of gave us a warning and they said, hey, we need our recyclables that are arriving here to be 95%, 95% one material, which is a challenge to, to meet because of the, the nature of our mixed recycling system. So, we need to meet a 5% contamination threshold. Then, in 2018, that was the really, the really escalation, the real escalation of these challenges. They dropped the contamination threshold from 5% to 0.5. And this is a challenge with the changing waste stream, the kind of confusion of the materials that we're using on our day-to-day basis. They've also, they've also just not allowed certain materials into their, into their, we can no longer import certain materials there. So, basically, what this resulting in, what the results of this is, is kind of the reduced, there's reduced demand. We have a supply surplus. There's increased cost to the processing of recyclables. And what this really results in is a low value for our recyclables. So, what does it really take to get to 0.5% clean material? So, 99.5% clean material. Basically, in every ton of material that is arriving in our facility, about 540 pounds are contaminants. So, those items that I mentioned that are not recyclable. And to, in order to sell, our customers are really expecting less than 10 pounds of contaminants. And this is, results in kind of increased cost of processing our material. I'll let Sue take this one here.
So, this is just a graph that kind of demonstrates for you where the value was back in 2015. And I would say that that value is, you know, commodity markets, as we all know, go up and down, right? So, if you were to look back prior to 2015, what you'd see is there's fluctuation. But, the fluctuation, there's some years that it's down a little bit, some years it's up a little bit. Even though it's, it's a commodity and it changes, you could, you could see the pattern of changing up and down. So, you know, it's, you expect it. You know that it's going to happen. There's going to be some good years and some, and some bad years. But, this is a fundamental shift. This is something that we've never seen before. And actually, I approached Cleve and, and staff back in 2018 when we, when we saw over a couple of years that there were fundamental changes in the markets, fundamental changes in the processing. And as Sarah alluded to, fundamental changes in the packaging. So, you kind of have this trifecta of things that have happened that have fundamentally changed the world of recycling for the foreseeable future. And I'll tell you that, you know, what we've seen over the course of even the last couple of months has been a continued decline in the commodity value. It's unfortunate. The state, again, is marching toward a 75% goal. So, we need to continue to provide programs. We need to continue to do the right thing. I'll tell you, there in markets across California, and I'm pretty in tune with, with what's going on across the state, there have been companies who've made the decision to landfill volume because they couldn't move it, such as mixed waste paper, which is a, a big, big, huge issue for us. And it's a large component of the residential stream, recycling stream. We have never landfilled any mixed paper. We've never landfilled any plastic. I mean, if we pick it up as, as a, as a commodity, if we pick it up as a recyclable, we take it to the right place and we do the right thing with it. We've borne the cost of that. And it's in the millions. At this point, we need to, we need to do something different.
Sue?
Yes.
Councilmember Varely wanted a little clarification.
Could you just go into a little bit, make that more clear? You're making about landfill and?
Yes. Okay, yes. Absolutely, I will. So, when China shut off, basically, they just shut off processors, recycling processors capability of shipping materials to them. It created a glut of material. A lot of that was what we call mixed waste paper. So, anything you would throw in your container that might be junk mail or this presentation. So, there's bales of this material sitting around and folks are struggling with what to do with it. And it costs a lot of money. There, there still are companies that will purchase this material from you, but they actually won't purchase it now. You have to pay them to take it. So, imagine you were getting $50 a ton for mixed waste paper. Now, you're paying that same company $50 a ton to take it from you. And you have to ship it there. So, it costs you $30 a ton to ship it there and another $50 a ton to pay them to take it. But, the right thing is going to happen with it. It's going to be recycled. It's going to be turned into some other thing, right? It's not going to be thrown into the landfill. There were some companies during this time period that said, we're not going to absorb the cost of this dramatic shift. And therefore, it's a lot cheaper for us to landfill it. I can landfill it for $27 a ton and it costs me nothing to get it there because the landfill's next door. So, I can spend $80 a ton to do the right thing, or I can spend $27 a ton and, well, what, what do you want me to do about it? You know, it's, it's just what it is. It's the market.
But, you don't get credit for that then, as?
Well, we've never taken that approach and I just want you to know that. Your recycling has never gone to the landfill. We've always done the right thing, no matter what the cost is to us. In the beginning, when we, when we saw this shift in markets, you know, China went through what they called, you know, China Sword. Then, they went through Green Fence and now they're in Blue Sky. So, what that means is that they have decided that they're going to be environmentally responsible, that they are going to consider climate change, that they want to clean up their act. And that means shutting the door, basically, on the United States and other countries sending material to them. And other countries like Indonesia, Malaysia are basically following suit with China. So, we are working very hard to only ship materials domestically, which frankly, I think we need to do. In the meantime, this is very painful. And so, you know, what you see demonstrated for you on this slide is that we made money on recycling. We were able to cover the cost of programs. on recycling, we were able to cover the cost of programs. We, the pendulum started to shift with these changes in China's decision about how they wanted to deal with imported materials to them. And you'll see the shift, shift even farther south. The other thing that happened, which is what Sarah alluded to, was now it costs more to process the material because you have to have, instead of ten people on a sort line sorting the material, now you have twenty-five. You were processing twenty-five tons an hour on a sort line, now you're processing fourteen. Because you have to clean the material, and you have to clean it a lot. And that's so you can even move it, sometimes moving it at a cost. So the combination of those two things, we are currently here in El Dorado at about a negative eighty dollars a ton for our recycling materials, where we used to be a positive fifty. So we've had about a hundred and twenty dollar per ton change, and that's on tons in excess of fifteen thousand a year. So it's a big, it's a big shift. Like I said, you know, over the years, we've seen changes in state law that have affected all of us. And over that time period, you know, we have made the decision as a company, and we worked really hard to find other ways to fine tune things, and we've never come before you to ask for an extraordinary circumstance rate change. This time, we're at a point where we need to do that. Okay, I'm going to flip to a happier note here for a minute. I think that's right. I'm going to come back to the, to rates because this is something to think about over the next two weeks we'll, we'll be back. But I want to talk a little bit about, you know, part of our annual presentation and hearing has to do with our performance standards. How did we perform as a company this year? You know, what have we done, what's coming? And I'd like to talk a little bit about that. So we service about three thousand customers in the city limits. One of the things we like to talk about is the participation level in the Community Cleanup Day, because we get a lot of participation in the Community Cleanup Day, and we partner with the city to put that on, and it's a, it's a wonderful event for folks. And as you can see, it's very well attended. We had forty-five tons in the spring and almost another forty tons in the fall. This year, the date for the Placerville Cleanup is June ninth. So I just wanted to remind everybody to get your material ready so you can drop it off for free. The other thing we like to talk about, you know, we measure our performance.
Sue, excuse me, it's, it's actually June eighth?
It's June eighth.
Saturday, June eighth?
My apologies.
Just wanted to correct that real quick.
Thank you. June eighth, please don't show up on June ninth. If you do, I'll, I'll be there for you, but yeah. Okay, thank you, Cleve. Talk a bit about our performance standards and how we measure ourselves. So we look at missed pickups. So nobody likes a missed pickup. A missed pickup is when our driver inadvertently misses your, misses your container at your home. So we track those, we monitor those closely, and we go back. The driver's supposed to notate if you don't have your container out, so that if you do call, we can say we'd be happy to come back and get you. We did notice the driver notated that it wasn't out this morning. So that wouldn't constitute a missed pickup, a missed pickup would be when we really miss you. So we had a hundred and eleven missed pickups this year. That's out of a hundred and fifty-five thousand service opportunities for the year. So just to kind of put that in perspective, our call answer rate was a hundred and seventy-one seconds on average, and our goal is a hundred and eighty seconds, so we, we were slightly better than the goal. Customer complaints, we had three customer complaints this year, and the goal really is to correct those customer complaints timely. And so we, we pride ourselves on handling customer complaints timely and making sure that we're responsive to our customers' needs. We had one litter complaint, and again, it was corrected timely. And we were, we submitted all of our reports to the city on time. I'm going to ask Sarah to talk about a couple of specific events. As you all know, we're very involved in the community. We, we very much appreciate being involved in the community, so, but we did a couple of things this year that I'd like to highlight. So Sarah?
Yeah, so we're, we're a very proud community partner. Just these last couple of weekends, we've been out and about, very active in the community of Placerville. We were at Placerville Kids Expo, we brought a truck and our driver. The little kiddos just love interacting with our truck and our driver. You can see, we had a really big lineup there. We were also at Placerville Earth Day this, this year, and we tried something new. We tried a community art project with plastic bottle caps. It was our first attempt, it turned out very okay for, you know, a bunch of kids and adults doing, making art together, but it was a fun way to interact and spread the awareness around recycling and solid waste.
I get all the fun parts of the presentation. And next time, we're going to bring a little show and tell, because I think it's really helpful. I don't know if any of you are confused about what you put in the recycling anymore. I am, and I do it for a living. Because everything's got a little recycling doohickey on it, right? And you think, oh, cool, I can just put it right in my recycling bin. And the problem is, you can't. Because a lot of those things, what they're telling you is it's made of recycled content, right? It's not recyclable, but it's made out of recycled content. So I asked Sarah, the next time we come and meet with you, to bring a container, and we could do a little show and tell, because I just think it's helpful. We're doing that with the rotaries, we're doing it with the chambers, we're doing different kind of town hall outreach type meetings. So I just want you to know that we're aware of how confusing it is, and we are going to educate, educate, educate. And you have our commitment to do that. This is going to come back, so I won't, I won't, I won't overtalk about this, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of things. As always, we've worked very hard to keep any rate change low. In fact, we've had some years where the rate change has been negative. Over the course of the last five years, our rate change has been two point seven six percent. So if you annualized it over the course of the last five years, that, including what we're requesting through the extraordinary rate adjustment period, it would be two point seven six percent annually. So we're, we're talking with all, all of our jurisdictions. This affects everyone, and I'll tell you that this is going on across the state. This isn't a Waste Connections issue, this is a global issue, and it certainly is a state issue. So we're asking for a, a flat change of a dollar thirteen, which equates to fifty-six cents every time we pick up your recycle cart. That's what that means. That's the change that we're asking for. With regard to recycling, for a commercial business, it would equate to a dollar eighty-six a yard. So that would be the, the change that we're requesting with regard to recycling. The CPI adjustment is our annual adjustment, and that's made up of two components. It's made up of the California Consumer Price Index, and it's also made up of the Fuel Index, the PPI. So the CPI, California, it's actually, CPI stands for Consumer Price Index, but this is the California Consumer Price Index. That change is three point seven percent for this year. The fuel component is actually a negative point five four percent. So the CPI that's being requested, that's reflected here in the dollar six that you see on the sixty-four gallon rate, that is a three point one six percent net CPI change. Okay, I'm going to flip ahead, we can come back to any questions that you have. So talking about 2019, and, you know, what I talked about with regard to education, I think the most, you know, usually, so for those of you that I haven't had the pleasure of, of meeting yet or interacting with yet, annually, we come before you and we talk about the things that we'd like to do this next year. We were always looking for new programs, we're always looking for ways to enhance our services. And this year, we, is really the year of education. What we, what we want to do is we want to make sure, you know, forever I stood up here and I told you, you know, when in doubt, if it's dry, throw it in the recycle container. So I have to read, I have to rewrite, and, you know, my team is already rewriting the story of recycling and making sure that we're doing it right. And it means going back to various entities and talking about it. It means meeting with commercial businesses and talking about it. It means actually showing folks what could go in and what can't, and what to do, you know, with, with, you know, what questions they have. So for example, Recollect, that's that search engine we talked about that we instituted a few years ago. You can go in on our website and you can type in any product, and you can see, well, not any product, but let's say, I don't know what to do with my bricks, I don't know what to do with my concrete, I don't know what to do with my plastic jugs or my, you know, my containers from planting my plants in my yard. You can go in and type those things into Recollect, and it will, if it's, if it's been hit enough times, it'll say, this is what you do with it, bring it to the MRF and you can recycle it. Or you need to take this, this is household hazardous waste, and this is what you do with it. So we, we're working hard, not only from a web perspective, a social media perspective, a printed publication perspective, and then getting out there and actually talking to folks. So this will be the year of education for us in, in a multitude of ways. And that ends our presentation, and we would love to entertain any questions you might have.
Well, thank you very much, Sue. And it has always been a pleasure to work with you and your company. I can see the concern in your face and hearing in your voice with what is changing just in the last six months probably, with where these products are no longer going to be welcomed in the recycling world, but yet they're still flowing into your facility every day, every hour. You know, I will turn, I will open it up to council members. And Karen, do you have any questions with what's been presented this evening?
Yeah, I've got some, a couple of comments and some questions. In terms of education, I know that I am definitely guilty of recycling wrong, but I've got posters on my fridge of what goes in, but what happens is I'll encounter something that's not on the poster, and I'm just like, ah, and then I throw it in the recycling. So I think having a list of, you know, things that you, you're aware of, that you're getting that you don't want people to put in there would be helpful, especially for me. And then I was also curious if there's anything coming down, like the legislative pipeline, to combat, combat packaging.
Great question, great question. We actually participate in a, it's a California Stirkship Council with regard to packaging. So there's definitely an emphasis, and believe me, I have, I have voiced my concern to Cal Recycle, and so have many others about packaging, because the deterioration of what we used to be able to do with packaging is, it's, it's, you know, it feels criminal to me. So we, there's definitely an emphasis at the state level to see packaging change, and there's an emphasis in the, in, you know, in the industry to see packaging change. I think that will happen, but I think it's going to take a little time, because, you know, that's, that's somebody's business, making that product, right? And they're, I'm doing the right thing, I'm making it out of recycled materials, look at me. So it feels like it should be right, but then you can't do anything with it, so it's And, and, and sometimes it's right, and it's okay that it goes in the landfill. So there's this, you know, I think we have to just open our minds a little bit. I know that's a long answer to your question, but sometimes we're using these products and we're making something really good out of them, they just don't have another use when they're done. And, you know, in most landfills in the state of California, I mean, we're creating methane gas, we're capturing it, and we're turning it into energy. So there's good things that are happening at our landfills in terms of, of turning that gas into electricity. So I, I think we have to, I think if we can reduce, I think reducing is key. I think some of the materials that are being repurposed to be in packaging are good. So we just, I think we're in uncharted waters, I think we got to figure it out over time and continue to have an open mind and, you know, just keep educating people to, to try and do the right thing. And your point about, you know, having a list, I mean, I need a list. You know, I think we all do, and I think it's ever-changing, so we have to be flexible and fluid in what we provide to you.
And then one more question on the mixed papers. I, I'm on a do not mail list, but I still get a stack of junk mail daily. That probably takes up about half of my recycling bin. Is there any effort to keep that just away, you know, away from the recycling bins in the first place?
That is a great question. I don't know if I have the answer for that one. Sarah, have you heard anything about, you know, kind of that whole junk mail, stop the junk mail?
Because I don't want it, you know? I don't want to send it to you and have to have you sort it either, you know?
Have you heard any, yeah, go ahead and speak to it.
Yeah, as far as stop junk mail, there's several campaigns about stopping junk mail. I know part of our mission around education is to include messaging around waste reduction and definitely tackling the junk mail as a part of it. So I'm always researching all the different programs and things, and I'm pulling together all the resources to be available to our public to participate. And, you know, we have this recycle right message, but we also want to include the waste reduction message.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent questions, thank you, Karen. Patty, did you have any comments or questions at this point?
Well, I was going to ask about the packaging, so thank you for doing that. Also, I want to go back to the landfill and turning it into the methane gas, and so why isn't that profitable? I mean, it seems to me the logical thing to do. Tell me where I'm wrong.
No, no, you're right. Landfills create methane gas by bearing garbage. So that's just a natural thing that happens, right? So I would say, over a decade ago, landfills started putting in infrastructure to capture the gas so that it didn't, it wasn't emitted into the ozone.
I remember all that, and I thought it was just a fantastic thing to...
Yes, it is fantastic. And so landfills of, of any magnitude, of any, you know, significant size, have put in these capturing systems, and they are turning gas into energy. And to put in a, to put in a system like that is very expensive, but they do make some money on the electricity, or they're able to power their own facility. So it makes sense to put in that capital, to do that capturing and do the right thing. Smaller landfills may have to, what they call flare off gas, in which case, it's still not going into the atmosphere, they're doing the right thing with it, but they're not able, they don't create enough gas to turn it into energy. So, you know, there, there's a couple different things that happen there, but, you know, it does, it does help pay for itself. Putting the, putting the process in does help pay for itself.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Patty. Ms. Ms. Sarah Gosa? Councilmember Thomas, questions, comments? We will, we'll be seeing this presentation again in two weeks.
I know it's completely unlike the state to put a mandate out without giving us the opportunity of how to comply.
Simply unheard of.
But with that said, I, I certainly appreciate all that you're doing to do this. I do know that I am also guilty, but I think that the communication, there's a big truck that comes every two weeks to my house and picks up that yellow, that yellow-lit bin. And I think that, you know, if he were to leave something on there, either stuck on or something similar to this, I would... or something similar to this, I would certainly make the effort to comply with that. And I know that it's just, because it's a guessing game right now. And I understand, we look at those things as well. And so, I know that the city is more than willing to put our effort, our foot forward to help comply and to help keep those costs down and help drive a more reliable process for you. The other thing I'd like to do is thank you guys for supporting the Downtown Merchants' Association. While I was president for two years there, you supported us by giving us the opportunity to have those bins, I mean, you delivered up to, I can't remember, 20 bins for us to put on the street during events, which really helped reduce the garbage, the overflow of our cans and, you know, keep the street clean. And so, with that, it was greatly appreciated, helped keep our costs down on the events and helped us be able to provide more opportunities for our community to come together. So, thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
Michael, did you?
Just really a comment more than a question and to the point that Kara brought up, in terms of legislative solutions, I work downtown Sacramento, I do lobbying, so I certainly know there's different things going down. But certainly, if I could, if I'm in town and there's something going, I'm happy to testify to say we need maybe some relief here, you know, different ways to meet the mandate. Is it a CalRecycle or is it ARB where the, where it's being overseen, the 2020, 75%?
Well, it's really both. I mean, there's, there's, it's, CalRecycle is the enforcer, I would say, and it's the ARB where the, you know, where the laws are really housed.
Right.
So, but CalRecycle is the one, they're the enforcement arm. So, when I say Cal, you know, the state's marching towards 75%, CalRecycle is the one that's coming and making sure that we're all doing everything we need to do. And, you know, I have to say that, you know, we meet with CalRecycle, with the city every year and they love us, you know? They love the city and everything that we're doing here. But I really appreciate your offer because there are times where we, you know, we'll meet with CalRecycle. I've been at a table with CalRecycle where I'm literally the only operator in the room. And, you know, so you, I'm gonna try and be politically correct here, but you have a lot of people sitting around the table who have never touched the material before, they've never had to deal with it, they don't understand the economics of it, and they don't care. That's unfortunate. I do think we're trying to all do the right thing and we do want to be good stewards of the planet, but we, but we all need to work together to get there and, and sometimes it doesn't feel that way.
And what are the, are the penalties already laid out for if we don't meet those goals? If you want to just briefly touch on that, just for folks to know what we all face if we don't hit these numbers?
Yes. So, the penalties haven't really changed since the advent of AB 939. It's a $10,000 a day fine. So, basically, if we don't comply or we are, you know, we're bad stewards, we decide to landfill everything and not recycle anything, you know, we could potentially face a $10,000 a day fine as a city. That falls on the shoulders of the city.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you. And I, just to, I was thinking the exact same thing in terms of if there was just a new sticker to stick on the yellow recycle thing, just to say, sort of, "Don't put these in here anymore" or "Don't put these in here at all." It's just one more way to get people to visually see something and say, "Oh, that's right. Maybe I should put it in the regular, in the regular trash." And I'm sure I've been guilty as well of putting things in that we shouldn't be, but I thought that was a great idea. And, yeah, and just to echo, I'm sure we'll do everything as a city to try to help to make sure that we're complying to the best extent possible.
Thank you.
We want, everybody wants to do the right thing.
Thank you. Yes, and we will, we're gonna think about, so we, so we do flyers every year with our bulky item vouchers and our, you know, we do a letter and we mail it to everyone. So, they have their voucher and their calendar and the do's and don'ts. And Sarah's worked really hard to update that list and make it as current and relevant as she can. But not everybody opens their mail. So, you know, because we're busy. I don't open my mail. I mean, it, sometimes, but not all the time. Or maybe not timely, or maybe it gets lost, I don't know. But, so we do need to think about how do we reach people besides the mail, right? And putting something, you know, we've always had pretty good success with putting something on a cart, you know, because people have to touch it, except for when their kids do it. And then, you know, I don't know. But we'll think about, like, how, how else can we reach out? How many different avenues can we use to reach out? But that will be a focus this year, so thank you for your input.
I have a vision of Sarah riding along the truck, slapping stickers on as the arms go up and down.
Yeah, yeah.
Get the timing down and you could get her out done pretty fast. This is, here we are, imagined in the state of California, looking for ways to solve state mandates. Seriously, where does our, where does our true garbage go now? Sue, does it, where is it truly landfilled once it's?
Your true garbage comes to the transfer station where it's what we call transloaded into a giant truck and it's taken to our landfill in Petroero Hills, which is in Sassoon.
Oh, okay.
So, that's where your, the majority of your waste goes. The other, the other landfill that we use is Forward Landfill, which is in Stockton. So, those are the two landfills that we use for your solid waste.
All right, and they are making methane, they have methane generators in both of those facilities?
They do, they are.
Patty's gonna ask that question in two weeks.
They certainly are.
We'll get the electric account numbers too, so we can verify.
Yes.
You showed a 64-gallon can in your rate increase proposal and you can be sure David Warren will be checking your mail.
Oh, yes.
Now, that was, that was referencing to, like, I have a 32-gallon garbage can and a 64 recycle and a 9,000-gallon yard can.
Yes.
So, that is gonna, I'll still have my 32, my 64, and my yard can.
Yes.
And that would be the increase that I would see as you proposed.
You would see a $1.13 and then the CPI change of 3.16%, which would be $22, your total would be $22.70. Because I did look that up, and we've provided a rate sheet and met with staff. The majority of customers in Placerville have a 35-gallon cart for their garbage and this rate is based on your garbage cart size.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah. I live across from the, one of the only people that doesn't recycle. I think last time we talked, we had 12 customers. I said, "Well, I know where one lives." Suddenly, he's ahead of the curve now because he's in and out of this unprofitable recycling business. You know, one last comment that I'll make is, is your, and you're, and also the information that Sarah has presented this evening regarding where we have created a problem with the packaging and it not being recyclable anymore. And, you know, that's an industry issue, the industries that are using that type of packaging. And is, here we go again, is California gonna be this odd duck out where everybody says, "Well, you do business in California, you have to use a cardboard box. You can't use a squeeze tube anymore." Or is this really, is this growing into a national issue?
So, Mayor Acuna, what I would say is this is a national issue. This is not just a California issue. California's issue is forcing this 75% diversion out of the landfills. But the, the economics of this, which is, you know, shoot, cardboard used to be valued at somewhere around, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna use $150 a ton. Today, it's 40, right? I'm gonna say, gosh, I mean, that's probably the best example, other than mixed paper, which, you know, maybe we were getting like 50 and now it's costing us 80. So, that just gives you, and when you think about where the weight is in your container, your weight is your cardboard, your weight is your junk mail, and your weight are your, are your glass bottles. That's your weight. So, and those are the things that have the least amount of value. And, and then you throw in all of this other stuff, right, that people think is recyclable, which is just kind of fluffy stuff that doesn't hardly weigh anything, but it contaminates the load. So, we still, you know, our sorters, right, so we, we send this material to a processor who has the optics and they have all of the different kinds of sorting equipment that you need to, to really sort this material correctly. So, that, that, what we call that debris or that litter comes out, that contamination comes out and we, and we get some pretty good product in terms of the cardboard and the, but it costs a lot of money to get all that out, right? So, and then you've got this devaluation of those commodity prices where the bulk of your material is coming from, which it's a, it's a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, we certainly appreciate the advanced information this evening.
Thank you.
I can see already that this will definitely up my game.
Excellent.
As far as what goes in, I suspected a lot of this stuff. Greasy pizza boxes.
I know, and I used to tell you to put them in. I used to tell you to put them in.
Yep.
China would take them. So, yep, so thank you for your time tonight. I really appreciate the hour you gave us, so thank you.
That's okay. It's important, it's important that we maintain the quality of our service, you know, the community's services are so important and yours is a key one, so the time needs to be spent.
Well, we've enjoyed a wonderful partnership and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Excellent job. We appreciate the presentation. Mr. Morris?
Could I make a couple of comments?
You certainly can.
First thing I want to mention is, especially for our new members on the council that haven't been through this before, this is part of our contract that annually, they come back with a potential rate increase based on the CPI and the fuel surcharge that she discussed tonight. The third component that is in the contract is for extraordinary circumstances, which is what we discussed regarding the recycling. This is the first time in the eight years I've been here that we've had that and I think even before that, I don't think it's ever, ever come up.
I don't ever remember it.
But it is part of the contract. They are allowed to look at that for these extraordinary circumstances. So, that's the process. This is an extra step we're taking this year because of this. Normally, this would have all been in one meeting, but because of the extraordinary circumstance, we felt that we should do this, this other presentation. The other thing I want to mention is, Councilmember Sarah Gosa asked about the penalties. Long story, story that I won't go into, but this was my career when I started in California. I was hired actually to write an AB 939 plan for the city of Lathrop when I first came to California back in 1990 when it was adopted, so. And I remember specifically them talking about those $10,000 a day penalties for not complying. But really what they're doing on compliance is if you're doing every effort that you can to comply, currently, that's what they're doing. I want to note that we're currently supposed to be at 50% reduction. I think our number is about 35, 36%, as I recall. Sue, I don't know if you know the exact number, but that's the range where we are, I believe.
That's just in your, in your curbside, curbside program. So, you're actually higher than that.
Okay.
Yeah, you're, you are meeting the state mandate right now on a per capita basis and I don't have that number off the top of my head, but you are in compliance with the state.
Okay.
Yes.
But the point I want to make though, to get to that 75%, really what we talked about tonight is kind of a step back in that whole process because as you talk about less items are gonna be recycled, I go back to Sue's comment, I was gonna make it if she didn't, that she's always told me, "If you don't know, put it in the recycling." Now, we're saying, "If you don't know, probably put it in the garbage instead." So, that's gonna change, plus less items that are recyclable, et cetera. We're actually, in my mind, taking a step back with what we talked about.
That's what I'm sitting here thinking.
Yeah.
Can we actually meet the mandate with the least amount of recyclables? I mean, if we recycle correctly, can we meet the mandate?
I'm not sure we can. I'm not sure we can. And I wanted to add to that, that, you know, we talked, when we met with, Sue was there, but I met with Jeff and talked about that fact, you know, really what has to happen is either they have to create new markets for the recycling or they've got to get to the source, which is the packaging that we talked about tonight. One of those two things has to be done if they truly want to get to that 75% from my point of view, so.
Yes, and I think we, you know, we're focusing right now pretty heavily on the organics, the food waste, the green waste, and making sure that we're not landfilling any of those volumes because those are volumes that traditionally have been landfilled and are now coming out of the landfill. Green waste has been coming out for quite a while from the curb, but not necessarily, you know, from all commercial businesses and multifamily complexes, et cetera. So, I think we just need to do a really good job of tracking everything we're doing as a community because there's a lot of things we do as a community. For example, grass cycling. If, and grass cycling is where you're mulch, you have a mulching mower, right? So, we're, or we're doing backyard composting. We need to be tracking that stuff so that we can say, "Hey, we've got all these programs." So, you might not see it as, you know, in a stat on a sheet of paper, but these are the, these are the activities that are being done in this community. And I'll also tell you that some of the materials that Sarah highlighted that are not really recyclable because they've moved to this different packaging, those are the lightest materials in your container. And everything is, everything is measured on weight. So, the heavy things, like the cardboard and the glass and the rigid plastic and the, you know, the other types of plastic and your mixed paper, et cetera, those things, that's, that's where your weight is. So, this is gonna be a lot of work for us to figure out, but I don't necessarily see us taking some giant dive backward because we're not going backward in programs and we're focusing on all the right things and we're gonna continue to focus on those organic programs and making sure we're in compliance there. And then, you know, we'll continue to focus on how we refine that mixed paper so we make sure there's always a home for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Sue, appreciate it. I just, I know Pierre, he works, you make sure through some reporting process that we are in compliance. Is that, isn't that correct, Sarah, with CalRecycle?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct. We're responsible for submitting what's called the EIR or the Electronic Annual Reporting to CalRecycle every year and that will be due by August of this year. And we go through, it's called the Paris Code Numbers, and they go through all the different cycling, recycling materials and we report back to the state. So, we work very closely with Eldorado Disposal in obtaining those numbers and putting them on that report and then submitting it to CalRecycle.
And then, so each year, that would be our actual number as far as the state of California is concerned, or what we've obtained.
That's correct.
And they're, the goals that they've set for.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Pierre. I wanted to point out that you have an intricate part in keeping us in compliance, similar to what Cleed did earlier when he worked for Lathrop. All right, well, thank you very much. We will now move on with our, rest of our meeting. We have a closed session. Item, Mr. Diskel, was there anything to report, sir?
No, there was no reportable action taken, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, adoption of the agenda. Could I have a motion for adoption?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted. Thank you very much. It seems amazing we've done almost two hours' work and we've just done that. Public comment, written communication. Mr. Morris, I believe we received a couple of things up here this evening.
You have, you have a letter from the Eldorado County Wapoomnas Nisinnan Miwak Nation regarding the presentations on historic city hall. The proposal was that we would be bringing back, those back to you on May 28th for you to receive a presentation. The committee has heard those presentations. Next step is for you to hear them, hear the committee's recommendation and then make a decision on that. Their request before you tonight in this letter that we received this last couple of days ago is that they have key team members, they haven't told me who, that are out of town on May 27th through May 30th and requesting that those presentations be done on a different date than May, than during that time. And then they say they're available the week of May 20th. Obviously, that's too tight of a timeframe for us to turn around. So, what, anyway, long story short, what I wanted to get this to you is provide this to you and then my intention was under the, your agenda items, future agenda items, to talk about that, how you would like to hear those proposals going forward. So, no, no need to react to this now. I thought we would take care of it under future agenda items, whether or not we schedule a special meeting for that and when that, that might be. If you read the remainder of the letter, you can also see that there's an issue with the date and that they're requesting a letter from the city to apply for a grant from the National the National Endowment for the Arts. We did that for the Eldorado Arts Council, which is your other proposal that you received last year, and so they're requesting that, and they're saying that that has a June 1st deadline to file that application. So that presents a complication in that, in that process also. So with that, I would just suggest that under future agenda items, we can have this discussion about when we hear those proposals, and I can present my, what my recommendation is, and we can go from there on it, so.
Cleve, a clarification. The letter that they, is, that they're referring to, that we wrote on behalf of the Arts Council, that didn't have specific actions. That was a broader, an entirely different project, is what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say.
Well, it was related to the Eldorado Arts Council and their, their cultural district that they want to put in place in Placerville. Wasn't specific to those buildings. Those buildings are a part of their plan, but their cultural district that they want to develop in Placerville was the ultimate goal of that grant application that they did.
So that was to represent that an entire district, whereas we are, both of these organizations are now in competition for specifics for, to particular buildings. So I don't see that just because we wrote a letter back last year for a different type of a request, that we would be obligated to meet a June 1st deadline for folks that we don't even know that we've selected to, you know, that have not been selected for a specific project.
That was going to be my question.
Yeah, that didn't seem appropriate to me.
So.
So I don't, I don't want the city manager to feel any pressure that he has to meet a June 1st deadline, because something took place last year for an entirely different project.
Understand.
Yeah. Any other comments?
That's what I don't understand, is that they haven't been selected, and so how can they apply for a grant when it hasn't been?
Was the 20?
And how, how long do we delay this process?
Well, I was just going to ask, wasn't the 28th the date that you set forward that the, that was your original goal?
That was my original plan, was, your next council meeting. My plan was to suggest that you hear the presentations at a pre-meeting, so like at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Right.
Where you could hear the presentations, and then it would be on your regular agenda at six o'clock with the recommendation from the committee, and you would consider it at that point, having heard the presentations and have the recommendation from the committee.
Well, you know, I would say that to respect the ad hoc committees, the diligent work that they did, not only the council members that were present, but the community members that were a part of that, would it even be necessary to have full presentations? If we have the recommendation from the ad hoc committee as to what, they have done a review, and they have done a vote, why would we need to see the complete presentations over again? Why not just take the recommendation with whatever, maybe a small presentation from the Arts Council and from the tribe, and?
That is totally up to the council. I just assumed that maybe you would want to.
Because there was a full room here.
It was.
I assumed maybe the council would want to see those, but it's not required. There's nothing that requires them.
Yeah, I don't see, you need to sit through that again, because it was a very lengthy process.
Isn't that why you have a committee?
Exactly what my point was going to be. That's why we had the ad hoc committee.
That's the way.
And they asked very good questions, and that was a public meeting, well attended.
In the process, in the?
Because I take your point. Let's, let's move this forward.
Right, let's move this forward, but in full disclosure, I would, if I'm going to be making a decision, that's going to be a long-term decision on these two buildings, I would at least like to have the basis of your information and that, the background to make that decision. I don't want to, while I appreciate the committee's decision or recommendation, I would still like to at least have background information so that I could make an informed decision.
I think Cleve has all that.
Well, I, I do, however, I don't think you can, I feel that maybe you can't get the full story unless you hear that presentation.
What if you had?
And we, we limited it to a 30-minute presentation. We don't need to go necessarily through all the questions and comments, however, you would probably do that in your council meeting, because you have to allow people to speak on the items.
I'm open to hearing the presentation again prior to our council meeting for an hour, four, hour and a half, whatever that is.
Maybe we could shorten the presentation a little bit, you know? But I, I think what's going to lengthen it are the, than the other folks that come forward.
You'll find there's going to be a lot of disruption to this process.
Well, that'll be happening no matter what in our city council meetings.
Not necessarily. If we have just the ad hoc committee's recommendations and a report from the ad hoc committee.
And you will have, yeah.
That should detail, it should answer your concerns. Again, why did we have a committee?
I agree. I was, I was wondering about the process being one.
Because I don't want to run this thing out. It's, it's going to take long enough as it is.
Are we going to make a decision now, or is that future agenda items?
I think you should do it under future agenda items, if they're selected at that point, so.
All right. Is there, was there any other written communication, Mr. Morris? I don't think so.
Mayor Hakuna's staff has an email that we would really enjoy sharing with the council.
Well, thank you. Go right ahead, sir. I thought he was going to read it.
I think he is, but.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Pierre.
You're very welcome. Staff received this at about three o'clock this afternoon, and it is very, let's just say it's very different than the typical kind of email the staffs receive, so I'm very, I'm very happy to read this into the record, so I'll go ahead and read it. "Hi, we are a group of three general practitioners and three secretaries in the city of Kongsberg in Norway. We visited Placerville in May 2016 on our way to friends in Yuba City, and decided during our stay in Placerville to name our doctor's office, Dr. Placerville. Dr. Placerville has been our name since January of 2017, and many of our more than 3,000 patients find the name selection fun. A couple of our patients have actually visited Placerville because of the name of our office. One of our doctors is from the hometown of Snowshoe Thompson in Telemark. We have just started planning a new trip to California. Could it be possible to visit the Town Hall in Placerville on our journey? By the way, we'll be entering a new location in one year, and we are wondering how to use some old pictures from Placerville as our decoration in our new office. Is there any archive of old pictures from Placerville that we could get permission to use? Best regards, Olaf Onstad, M.D., Dr. Placerville of Kongsberg, Norway."
That is neat.
Oh, my gosh, that is something else, wow.
So after reading that email, I quickly got on the internet and Googled Dr. Placerville in Kongsberg, Norway, and was actually able to pull up a full website, complete with photographs, and I was able to print one of the photographs, and I will pass this along to the, to the council to see, but I want you to notice in particular the Dr. Placerville t-shirts that all the, that the doctor and his staff are wearing.
That is so funny.
Oh, I can't wait for these nice folks to get here.
So with that, staff will be responding. We're going to do what we can to get them some old pictures of Placerville per their request, and we look forward to having them visit Placerville, and staff would like to extend an invitation to the mayor to be the ambassador, actually to meet with them, should they come and wish to tour City Hall or any other city facilities. Thank you.
Well, it would certainly be my honor to?
Maybe they could come to a meeting.
Yeah, it'd be fun to have them at a meeting, but whatever, Pierre, whatever contact you have, please include me in the loop, and I'd be honored to have, entertain them as our guests. Thank you for that. That was indeed unusual. That's a first in my, in many years. All right, oral communications. I should note that we have one audience member that's there this evening, Sue Rodman. Did you have any comments for the council on a non-agendized item?
And I got this wonderful flyer in my water bill, and it says, "Does Master Preparedness? Am I prepared?" And all the steps to sign up for Code Red, and to sign up for the Placerville Police Department, and to get the ways to be prepared in evacuations. And so now, I can say, "Yes, I am prepared, thank you very much." Was very helpful, because they talked about Code Red a couple of weeks ago, but they go through, okay, this is how you sign up, blah, 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 and you can't write fast enough to do it, so this was very helpful to get with my water bill. Thanks.
Thank you, Sue. We appreciate that comment, because coming from you, we know that you thoroughly investigated it, and it was very timely, and that is the latest and best way to be informed. So I thought that was great timing, Mr. Warren, with the water bill. Now, the bill's another story, but the flyer was great. No, it's all good. It's going to rain. All right, no other member of the public present, so we thank Sue for her attendance, and we'll close that item and move on to item eight, the consent calendar. And we've yacked our way through to 8:20, and there's a couple of items I think we're going to want to have pulled. Is there any item that the council member would like to pull?
I would like to pull 8.10.
All right, 8.10. Michael?
8.6.
8.6. Anybody else? Did I want to pull one? Cleve, did I want to pull one?
You had mentioned 8.9. Do you still want to do that?
No. No, 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 I think I can, I can talk with staff offline on that.
Okay.
I think that would probably be better. All right, so we have 8.10, 8.6. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I'd move that we approve the consent calendar as presented with?
Second.
All right, before we ask for a vote, is there any member of the public that would like to comment on any item, any of the consent calendar items? Mr. Warren is warming up, I think, for one. Good evening again, Sue.
Good evening, member of the Measure Action L Committee. And I, when I looked at the consent calendar and looked at it, it says they're considered routine, and then I looked at what they are, and I thought, okay, 8.7 doesn't seem routine to me, 8.8 does not seem routine to me. That's the whole Placerville, Western, Western Placerville interchange, which we've never had as consent calendar before. And then 8.9, where we are actually changing Measure L allocations from one section to another, and I think those should be not consent calendar. I think those should be at least, if not discussed, at least explained to the public.
All right, I appreciate your comments. All right, so we had a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar, except for item 8.6 and item 8.10. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
All right, real call vote, please.
Mayor Hakuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas?
Aye.
That portion of the consent calendar is passed unanimously, and Sue, I share your concern. I'll do a better job to watch for those consent calendar items, because I feel the same way you do. Some things need to, just a couple of minutes out there to limelight, so that everybody knows what's going on with these various projects and who is funding them. So I'll do a better job. All right, so we'll move on to items pulled from the consent calendar. We'll begin with item 8.6, which I would certainly never buried this happy news in the consent calendar, the acknowledge and file the HDL sales tax and economic report for the quarter ending December 31st. Dave, please go ahead. Or was there a specific question?
No, just in general, I just, I thought we should sunshine it a little bit.
Sure. A brief staff report, then?
Yes, sir, that would be wonderful.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, back in November, you approved an agreement with HDL, with who's your sales tax auditor to provide further information about your various sales taxes, including Bradley Burns, Measure H, Measure J, Measure L. Along with that service, they provide executive reports on each sales tax, and we wanted to kind of present those to you so you can see the information that's available. We would like to post these to your website and also provide this information to your Measure H, Measure L committee. So the first one is the actual, hold on, just a second, sorry. You have the sales tax trends and economic drivers, one with the poppies on the front of it. That report, really, a lot of it is, in fact, general economic drivers, just to kind of help you understand in the state of California, how we're doing in the various, you know, transportation, building construction, food and drug, business industry, so on and so forth, fuel. And then there's also, speaking of fuel, on the very back page, gasoline and diesel trends, which right now, you've probably noticed that the pump prices have really escalated, so that does affect your sales tax. There's also a quarterly report that's, looks like this, Q4, and it talks about, by business type, how you performed in the quarter ending December 31st, excuse me, and it has your top 25 sales tax producers, which you've seen before. It also has comparison for both point-of-sale, county pool, state pool, and your add-on sales taxes, and also has statewide information. You may see in the box on the back page of this report, excuse me, the top 15 business types, and some of them are marked confidential, and you ask, "Why would that be confidential?" Well, there's a rule called the gang of four, and if you only have four or less, or excuse me, if you have more, four or more businesses, you can disclose the information publicly. If it's less than four, it's considered confidential information. And so, in some of these categories, like building materials, we actually have less than four, so that's why it's considered confidential information. They can't disclose that information. You also have quarterly information on your Measure J, Measure H, Measure L sales taxes, similar to the Bradley Burns. I want to kind of explain, at the bottom of each report, it says confidential information, do not distribute or without authorization. We did get authorization. This information is not considered confidential. However, behind this report, there was confidential information which were not provided to you, so rest assured, it's not confidential. But you can see that Measure J, Measure L, Measure H are all performing well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for, for Dave on this? Nice report.
I have one question.
Sure, sure.
I read somewhere in there, I can't find it, but have they been able to find or determine that there is any lost or potential lost revenue that they could recover in terms of? It looked like part of their contract was to find unrealized opportunities of collecting sales tax.
We do. We just, actually, a couple of months ago, Mr. Morris and I received a fairly sizable one, that the taxpayer usually reported on a regular basis, timely, and appeared to be accurately, but all of a sudden they dropped off the map, and they're researching that and going to correct that. There's also newer businesses that may not, aren't as savvy when it comes to sales tax reporting, that may need some help, and they reach out to them. There may be sporadic, where contractors come in and do business, go out, and they forgot to report sales tax. So they, HDL does an excellent job monitoring that. If you ever come across, I actually had a staff member show me a sales tax receipt for service that did not include sales tax. So if you ever come across that with one of our businesses, let us know, and we will interface with HDL and ask them to take a look at that for us. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, there's two things that happen, councilmembers. One is, they monitor it, and they see certain discrepancies, that they will actually ask our permission to go in and audit that company and see if they're doing what they should be. And then the other thing is, as Dave mentioned, if we see something that we don't think is right, we can refer that to them, and they will go in and audit it, so.
Sometimes the inquiries can be statewide. You may have a vendor that provides service throughout the state that is having some problems, so that's something to monitor as well.
Any other questions for Dave, comments? Dave, I have one. When would we anticipate seeing the first quarter of 2019?
I anticipate HDL will have that for us probably late June, early July, so.
Okay.
Either your second meeting in June or your first meeting in July.
All right.
Most likely.
Thank you, sir. If there's no other questions, there's a motion. Is there a motion to approve 8.6?
I'll move for approval.
Second. This is an acknowledge and file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dave. Look forward to seeing great quarterly reports. Those, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dave. Look forward to seeing great quarterly reports. Long overdue to have that nice format, and it looks like we've really stepped our game up quite nicely, so thank you for your hard work on that. The other item that was pulled was item 8.10, which is a resolution retroactively approving agreement with Moore for janitorial services throughout the city. I believe Mr. Zeller had that report. Was there some, was a specific question, I believe?
I wanted to highlight it because we talked about their fundraiser to, for their new building and everything. And I did say that they, the city employs them, and I just thought this is an excellent presentation as to where they're employed with the city. So I just wanted to highlight it.
All right. If there was no other questions, did you want?
I'd like to.
Terry, do, uh?
Yeah, if you want to read it aloud.
Nick, is he still over there?
Sure, I am. I'm in the short, I'm in the short chair tonight, so you can see.
Good evening. If you could go over briefly, Terry, with the?
Sure, I'd like to.
Thank you, sure.
Mayor and council, this agreement was waiting on my desk for action when I started, and so I required a little bit of background. And so I'll speak on it as well as I can. The, the staff report is for adopting a resolution to approve an agreement with Moore Incorporated for janitorial services. They consistently do a good job at our sites, and they're listed in the staff report. They do the mosquito parking ride, downtown restrooms, they clean up Main Street and the parking garage. They manage to clean up nine of our city parking lots, five of the city parks, and the water reclamation facility. And so this is requesting adoption of their new contract. They did have a rate increase, and that's reflected in your staff report. And we're able to absorb that increase in this fiscal year, and we're planning for it in the next fiscal year. So I can answer any specific questions.
All right, thank you very much for that report. Terry, Patty, did you have any other questions?
No, I just, like I say, I wanted to highlight it, and I just think it's important, especially at this time, that we show folks what they do for us.
Absolutely. They do a wonderful job.
And they also contract with PDA to keep all the flowers watered down town, which is a great resource. Often, it's grant money and donated money that goes, turns right back into helping support the Moore program, so.
They again are an intricate part of keeping Placerville looking the way it does.
Well, and employing those folks, too. You know, I just think it's just really a great program and one that I've been in favor of all the time.
I appreciate.
Anyway, I'll move for.
I was just gonna ask. All right, is there a second?
A second.
Moved by councilmember Borelli and seconded by Vice Mayor Saragosa. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Patty. Thank you for bringing that recognition forward for one of our great service providers. All right, we have reached the point in the evening where item 10.1, an ordinance, this is a request from Pierre to waive a second reading and adopt an ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units, ADUs, to bring our codes in compliance with the latest state regulations. Pierre, did you have perhaps a brief report on where we are this evening with this, moving this ordinance along?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just in brief, in 2017, then-Governor Jerry Brown signed additional ADU legislation in the law to clarify state ADU law through Senate Bill SB 229 and Assembly Bill AB 494. And these updates went into effect on January 1st of 2018. And these proposed changes are to bring our ordinance into compliance with the new state law. The Planning Commission did consider staff's proposed recommended changes back on April the 2nd of this year. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of the ordinance as amended. And then on May 23rd of this year, the City Council introduced and waived the first reading of this ordinance. And with that, staff just wants to make one minor change to the ordinance as presented to you. And that would be to correct Section 10-4-12, D as in dog, eight. And we would be recommending to change "single-family zoning" to read "residential zoning." And that would be on page 2 of the proposed ordinance, under item 8, under building coverage. Change that sentence to read "residential zoning" as opposed to "single-family zoning." It should read "residential zoning" throughout the text. And with that change, staff would recommend waiving the second reading of an ordinance, amending Title 10, the zoning code, in Chapter 4, which is general regulations, Section 12, accessory dwelling units, ADUs, to bring the city code into compliance with state laws amended, and adopt said ordinance. That concludes staff's report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Thank you very much, Pierre. I would ask to the attorney if that change is, is in any way influenced moving this forward?
I'm not interpreting it as, excuse me, as a substantive change, but rather a clerical one, just changing one use of term residential from single-family.
Thank you very much.
Which is residential use either way.
Yes, sir. I just want to make sure that we did make that reference so that there could be no question. All right, is, any other, any comments or questions for staff at this point?
I have a question.
Sure.
So last time we had this come up, we had some discussion about the size of the ADUs. And kind of going back to that, feel free to correct me if I'm reading this wrong. But the maximum size is 50% of the primary dwelling unit, but it can't be smaller than 600 feet, correct?
But not larger than 1,200 square feet.
Okay.
So 1,200 square feet being the maximum, no smaller than 600 square feet.
Is there really a need for both of those qualifiers? I mean, does the size, for instance, my house is 1,100 square feet. I don't have space for an ADU with my setbacks, but if, say I did, why would it matter? I mean, if I could fit a 600-square-foot ADU in my yard, but it's bigger than half my house, why would that serve the purpose of allowing ADUs in the city?
So are you asking, why are we not considering a maximum or a minimum square footage smaller than 600 square feet? Is that the question?
Yeah, it just seems like a very arbitrary, it seems very arbitrary.
I guess it goes back in history. It used to be that 600 square feet was the maximum size of an ADU. Back then, they were termed granny flats. And then the state proposed some, basically, they instituted regulation that doubled the size to 1,200 square feet. So 1,200 square feet is the maximum size. It doesn't prevent the city from going through a process and making a determination that, in the city's best interest, that we allow an ADU to be larger than 1,200 square feet. And so the 600-square-foot minimum, which used to be the maximum, is still set at the minimum. The California Building Code was amended some time ago. It basically defines an efficiency dwelling unit not to be less than 220 square feet. So, and that's very, very small. It's a shoebox, if you will. A lot of the cities that have implemented that size of an ADU, where staff did look at the legislative history and what was, you know, debated when they were looking at reducing that size. And a lot of, a lot of that had to do with cities that had a lot of requirements for maybe single occupancy, where you have one person living. So cities that have a University of California or a California State University, you know, so these are basically looking at maybe to supplant housing for students instead of, you know, dorms and that kind of thing. Or like the city of San Francisco, we looked at the city of San Francisco to see what they did in response to this. And they do allow units to be as small as 220 square feet. But of course, San Francisco is a much different market. They're probably able to construct and rent those out for several thousand dollars a month. In the city of Placerville, we haven't had any demand for any units of this size. So usually, we're getting units built, 600 square feet and larger rather than smaller. If you recall at our last discussion on tiny homes, those were actually recreational vehicles, RVs, as opposed to the efficiency dwelling unit that's being discussed in the California Building Code. And it's also discussed in the Health and Safety Code under Sections 17, 9, 5, 8.1, where it also allows for very small efficiency dwelling units. But these are stick-built or manufactured homes. They wouldn't be an RV.
And do you think that we need to have both the 50% of the primary dwelling? Because who cares how big the primary dwelling unit is if you have a range for how big the ADU is gonna be?
If you wish for staff to come back and actually look at making the ADUs larger, we can certainly do that.
Or not the ADU larger, but just why does it matter what percentage it is of the primary dwelling unit? Like, can we just get rid of that qualifier altogether?
We can certainly do that. I think it was mainly meant to maintain the appearance of a single-family residential zone. And so there then was the ability to create what was called a granny flat. Historically, that's what they were called. And so I think most zone districts want to maintain that this is a single-family zone as opposed to, as opposed to a multifamily zone, to where you're then seeing more than one unit in a single-family home, where something that's constrained in size or doesn't overwhelm, or it's supposed to be accessory to the principal use of the primary dwelling, as opposed to just allowing then a second unit. I think that it's more of a design criteria. But if you wish for staff to research that, study that some more, we can certainly bring it to the Planning Commission and bring it back to council for further consideration if it's the wish of the council.
Do you guys have any thoughts on that? Are you fine with it how it is?
I was okay with the way we were going at this point, just because there hasn't been a tremendous demand for any of this yet, just to get us in compliance. But.
There is some legislation, AB 68, AB 69, by Assembly Member Ting. It doesn't quite hit on all of your concerns, Kara. It does address streamlining the process. It would amend the California Building Code to have like a small home building code to do these a little bit quicker. It would also, so anything under 800 square feet for an ADU. And then will eliminate some of the parking requirements as well that go along with it. That's another part of it. And then the bigger conversation with SB 50, which is a big housing omnibus bill. There's been an agreement that, I mean, it's kind of good news for us in the sense that we won't, in a small county, so under 600,000 people in a county, we won't have the same building requirements if this bill were to go forward in its current form, to have to have the same type of housing. But you would be able to build, and this maybe goes to where you're headed, is you would be able to build fourplexes by right as infill, or if like a house burned down, you would then be able to build a fourplex by right as opposed to just having to be another single-family residence. So that's, that would be one thing that rural cities like ours and counties under 600,000 would have to do. And then in bigger urban centers, they'd have, they'd have more scalable, higher high-rises and less parking requirements. But there are, I guess, for a long way to say about it, there are a lot of things going on to try to bring more housing in, in a way that doesn't disrupt, in communities like ours, you know, where you're not gonna have a high-rise going, because nobody's gonna build it and no one is gonna probably come. But still give ways to be able to do that. And then with the ADUs, to come up with ways to, at least with, from the parking and from the, the ability to approve them, to move it a little bit quicker. The ADU bills, I think, are still sort of in flux. I don't know what those will ultimately end up. But I do feel pretty confident now that we will get an SB 50, that bill will pass in some form. I think once you got the sign-off on the 600,000 and less in counties, it helped move the ball quite a bit. Because a lot of those coastal communities that were, I think, had some concerns, just like the rural communities, it brought off a lot of the opposition. So, you know, we'll see where that bill ultimately goes, but it's, it's a long ways to say, I think, we can probably, we can probably go forward with what we have. There are, there are bills that are gonna end up changing, changing this again. But I think for now, we're probably in a good spot. And then in terms of increasing supply for homes and doing, you know, when we can do those fourplexes, it'll at least by right, it'll, it'll help us with some of our housing element here as well.
So could I ask you a quick, real quick?
Sure.
You said if a house burns down by right, you can put in a fourplex, no matter what the zoning is?
Correct.
Really?
Well, that's a part of a proposal.
That's part of the proposal.
I need a proposal, I know. Wow, okay.
Yeah.
I don't like that Patty asked that.
I already have a fourplex. I'm not gonna burn anything down.
No, I don't necessarily disagree with your line of questioning. I just think the timing is such that we could probably bring this forward with the next round of bills and requirements of the state and probably not affect anybody, anybody in our community at this time. And I think, and I don't disagree with it, but we're at a point where we're at the second reading, and I don't know that the impact is sufficient to warrant restarting over this process.
I think what I'm hearing from Councilmember Taylor is that when we, this next round does come around for changes, let's make sure that we look at this as part of it, we can consider it. When we go through the Planning Commission with changes, let's bring up these issues, and we can do that and have the Planning Commission study that at that time.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I just, I think that 600 feet seems pretty big for, I mean, there's a lot of people that would, you know, single people and students that would be happy in a smaller dwelling unit. So I think that we need to, we should look at people being able to make those choices. But I'm fine with moving this forward and then coming back on another round.
And I think we were willing to look at maybe a little bit smaller. I'm more concerned if we're looking at allowing a larger because then that's not meeting the intent of an accessory dwelling unit.
No, and it's like Kara pointed out, the bigger ones, it wouldn't fit on her lot. She has 1,100 square feet.
Yeah, I mean, this wouldn't affect me at all, but I think making more choices available is the purpose of it.
Exactly. So Pierre, as this does come, and I'm pretty confident, Michael has the detailed report, but I'm pretty confident that just the market demand in California, this will be, you will be hearing information from the state in the next six to eight months that says, oh, make the square footage allowances lower, smaller. And this will start to address Kara's concerns, making it fit better in our town. But I understand your desire, too, to maintain a streetscape for the way these projects were originally built. We don't look, start to look like multifamily.
And should staff be implementing some changes due to state legislation? Staff will look at both, that 50% of the primary residents, no larger than that requirement. And we'll also look at maybe reducing the minimum size of an ADU as well.
I think that'd be very appropriate, given the size of our town. All right, gosh, where are we? Oh, we need a motion if there's no other discussion. Have I opened the public hearing? Perhaps I haven't, so I will. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on item 10.1, which is in regards to accessory dwelling units?
Sue Rodman again, Placerville resident. And yes, I stuck it out so that I could give you my pitch for tiny houses again. I think that they are appropriate for accessory dwelling units. Fresno already took the step of allowing tiny houses, and even ones on wheels, to be considered permanent residence if they're parked on property that already has a larger home on it. Only one tiny house is permitted on the property, and the tiny house can be rented to anybody. For cities like Placerville, I think part of the appeal of tiny houses is ADUs, is they can become a new type of affordable housing. Tiny homes could help meet Placerville's RENA numbers for low and very low-income housing. And if you want an example, Google the beautiful tiny house community that's in Lemon Cove. It's about 15 miles east of Vesalia, and it's a whole community of tiny homes, and it's very pretty. It's very well laid out. Tiny houses can also be an attractive option for retirees who wants to downsize after the kids leave the nest. And the tiny houses often have similar square footage to retirement or assisted-living apartments. I remember the stress of moving my mother and having to sort through all her stuff. It was a nightmare that I do not wish for my daughter to ever have. Having the option for a tiny house would allow me to get rid of all the stuff that no one else for a tiny house would allow me to get rid of all the stuff that no one else wants, simplify my life, and remain in Placerville, which I would like to do. Kansas City built a tiny house village for homeless veterans and coupled it with mandatory programs like job training and drug rehab. The project's been very successful, and there's plans to build more tiny homes for that. There are other tiny houses for the homeless projects in Seattle, Austin, and Portland. They are continuing to be proposed as solutions for more than half a million Americans without a roof over their heads. Changes were made in January to the International Residential Code that establishes specific guidelines for tiny houses. And we know most states use the IRC as a model for their codes, so Placerville wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel. I hope that as we consider this zoning ordinance amendment for accessory dwelling units, we look forward to include tiny houses as ADUs in the next iteration of zoning. We know this, I don't think is going away. We know it'll come back again. I think Placerville's a forward-thinking community, and while Fresno may be ahead of us, we can learn from them and help our low and very low-income residents and maybe help some of our currently homeless people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. And thank you for giving a copy of that to our city clerk. That's important for the record. As there, seeing no one else in the audience, I will go ahead and close public comment for this item and bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
My move that we waive the second reading and adopt the ordinance as recommended.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Acuna.
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Saragosa.
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas.
Aye.
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you for all the good input. And we will count on Mr. Rivas to keep these ideas and concerns in mind as this issue evolves, as this issue evolves. And in this state, I imagine it will be sooner rather than later. No public hearings, no discussion items. We've had a lot of discussion, though.
We have, we have.
Councilmember reports. Councilmember, do you have a transit authority? Have we met? No, we haven't met recently.
Yeah, you have, since the last meeting.
Okay. It was fine. We had a good meeting.
Okay.
There are no issues. Given the hour, everything is great at transit. We are in a very well-thought-out transition plan over there in all seriousness. So Director Mindy Jackson is one of the expectors, doing an excellent job in coordinating her leaving and bringing in the new director. All right. Eldora, County Transportation Commission, anything to report?
We, we had a good meeting. I presented Mindy, said Mindy Jackson, with a certificate for retiring transit director, honoring her with her partnership with the Transportation Commission. Some of the things that we, that Woody highlighted were, we talked, for the city of Placerville, Western Placerville Interchange is Phase Two and Two Point Two, the Upper Broadway Bike Lane Projects, the Broadway Sidewalks Project, the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facilities Project, and then Main Street Cedar Ravine Clay Street Intersection Improvement Project. He also talked about the US Highway Fifty Hotspot Study, which, A, really want to, really, I want to see that go. And he talked about the first meeting and that there was a schedule, it said the schedule was delayed slightly due to the weather impacting Caltrans' ability to collect new traffic count data. And then he talked about the US Highway Fifty Camino Safety Project. They had a meeting. I was not able to go. I don't know if anybody did. But anyway, that's moving forward. This is something that's been ongoing for twenty-five years, I think. And other than that, I think that was about it.
That's quite a lot.
Michael, did I miss something?
Nope. I think you covered them all.
Thank you, Patty. LAFCO, we meet next, well, we meet in two weeks. St. Cloud?
We meet Thursday.
All right. Well, now I'll be back from cap to cap, so there should be
Yep.
A lot of interesting stories. Hopefully, there's some good stories. Two by two. Cleve, how are we doing on getting a two by two scheduled?
Dennis, have we scheduled one?
Ask Regina.
I know we're trying to schedule a five by five.
Five by five, right.
Plus staff.
I believe there's, we're considering a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, I think tentatively June tenth.
Tenth, right. And I thank everybody for helping Regina, responding to her requests to, hey, we were all available.
It wasn't our fault.
Thank everybody for, thank the council members for being available both times. So we'll stand by for that one.
Mr. Mayor, could I just add a?
Sure.
I, I just wanted to announce that the Placerville Fire Safety Council is going to meet Thursday, May sixteenth, at five thirty at the Escaton Village Center Meeting Room. And their guest speaker is going to be Carl Hagan, who is a former council member and mayor of Placerville. And he's also a real estate, excuse me, insurance agent. And he is going to give a presentation, update on fire insurance for your home and actions for homeowners. And then they, he's going to be on, he's scheduled to appear first, and then they're going to take a five-minute break and they'll have a meeting, a regular meeting, but, which I think is interesting to stay for too, because of all the things they're going to discuss, so.
I'm surprised they have not outgrown that room up at Escaton.
I think that, I think that with this presentation, I don't know about you folks, but I've had an email, people, and I've had a telephone call. People are very concerned about this insurance issue, so I think this might be an overflow crowd.
Thank you, Patty. All right. Being now the reports request for future agenda items, I do have one, and it would be to begin a request to create a temporary fire restriction in town for this year, beginning, I'll propose July first and ending December first. And the thinking is, is that because we weren't able to get our fire safe ordinance in effect this year, due to the nature of the wildfire seasons, that it seems prudent that we outlaw all outdoor fire during the height of the fire season. This would be on public and private property. Right now, there's a tremendous amount of campfires that are going on that are varying. You'll get a different answer from whatever, from whatever jurisdiction that you speak with. Some consider the right to build a fire a right because it's a heating, cooking fire. It just seems insane after what happened in Paradise in November. Unless somebody knows that it's going to rain in September. But I just see the efforts that the police, I know, I know personally, I have witnessed the fires that they have prevented on public and private property during the summer, well outside of entry standard use, that this community wouldn't support at least a one summer ban on outdoor fires.
Mark, I thought we had bans.
Well, and so a lot of people do. And there are other, you know, this would be any kind of campfire, cooking fire.
So what bans are there now? Probably burning wood.
Well, I don't, I don't want to get into, we shouldn't get into a bunch of discussions because this is a request for a future agenda item. But you can see the questions that I'm having, and I know I've heard it from several reliable sources at the police department that there is a real need for a very clear-cut message that our officers can deliver. And right now, there isn't. So if there would be consensus, we will direct staff to bring this back. Sounds good to me?
Yeah, it sounds fine with me.
All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any other requests for future agenda items?
We, we have a couple from our end. I'm going to start with, I'm going to let Dave Warren talk about our budget workshop. We are running into some delays with getting the information ready. We want to talk about.
Are we, or this is for future agenda items?
It was at a, what, part of our meeting, wasn't it?
The budget workshop.
Oh, it's another workshop? I thought.
Can we have one more workshop to go?
Right.
Oh, okay.
So this is an update. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So as Cleve indicated, we are working feverishly to complete your initial draft budget. There's a lot of moving parts this year. As you know, we're in negotiations with two employee units presently. And we have, you have a five-year rate increase for water and sewer rates. And this will be the first year that we go from tier one to tier two. And making sure that, we want to make sure we have the analysis so you can make a sound decision as to whether we raise rates or not. And of course, the PERS issue. So what we're proposing is, is that we reschedule the May twenty-second meeting to Wednesday, June fifth. It could be in the afternoon or evening. So depending on your schedule, say like from three to six or five to eight, we'd need about three hours of your time.
So you are proposing Wednesday, June the fifth?
I will, I will not be here.
Okay.
I mean, you can do it without me, but I, I've got a thing scheduled with the People to People program that I'm leaving town.
All right.
I could do after, like, four, starting at four.
Starting at four?
That's possible. Okay. Dennis, Dennis is good. I'm good.
Whatever.
Alex finding me.
Will you bring soup?
Yeah, I'll bring soup.
Good food. It's going to rain that day.
I guess my concern would be, Patty, is it just that June fifth that you're gone? Are you, is there other days in there?
Yeah. We don't want to count you out.
This is, this is pretty important, so I'm.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm leaving the fifth and I'll be home the sixth.
And June nineteenth is probably too late.
Yeah, we got to do it sooner than that.
How about the tenth, how about the tenth, which is a.
Well, that was going to be our joint.
BOF, yeah.
Our five by five.
Joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, oh.
But that day is.
Would that work for?
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm pretty open on Mondays, so I could do.
And I've got June third open.
What's today's?
It's a Monday.
That's one Monday.
Oh, you're not going to be there. That's right. You were.
That was a bad one for that.
That's right.
And.
June fourth?
If we did it in the, excuse, if we did it in the evening or late.
That's a planning commission meeting for this building.
Well, they probably cancel.
Yeah, we don't know yet.
I mean, that now.
Sad a joke. What are you, which date are you talking to?
June fourth.
It's the fourth, because they're the first and, they're the first and.
It's the fourth.
Third, we're the second and the fourth.
Right.
I think it's at three o'clock in Sacramento.
Can you change it?
Yeah, the third, yeah. That day's bad. The third's bad. Okay, Dave, let's see now. Let's pick another day.
Well, maybe the tenth.
So the fourth doesn't work?
Huh?
The fourth doesn't work?
It doesn't seem like the fourth, no, we don't.
How about the sixth?
The fourth, the fourth. Now, the fourth, the fourth, what does?
I can't do it the fourth. I mean, I'm gone the fifth and sixth. I'll be home.
Oh, you're gone the sixth as well. Okay.
Seventh week, I'm, is a Friday, but.
Option, and we've done this.
I couldn't do it.
How about in the morning? I've seen you go to work on Fridays like that, yes.
Yeah. I've got, I've got big events every weekend from like here.
And it's wagon train, too.
Yeah, so.
Oh, that's true.
So I don't know if that.
Does that mean Friday's out?
Yeah, Friday's out until mid-June for me.
That's okay. No problem. We'll figure it out.
Regina, do we know what time the joint meeting is with the Board of Supervisor?
No, we had Jim Matrison and I, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors, had discussed a two o'clock meeting time, but he's still trying to gather the availability of the Board of Supervisors.
So we don't know on the tenth whether, what time that would be.
I would say maybe.
That may be two, more than you want to do, two hours of them and three hours of, does that work?
That would be the best for me, yeah.
Yeah, active works better for, I mean, compacted.
If we were able to schedule that around either morning or afternoon, whichever one they don't do.
Get it over.
Dave, does that work?
I'm sorry, which day is that?
June tenth, Monday, June tenth. I know that's.
The only concern I have is, we're going to present on the eleventh your draft budget in a PowerPoint presentation. So to have the information prepared for that meeting, it's not impossible, but it's just highly.
So let's look at it, let's look at a date in May. We didn't throw anything out in May.
What about May twenty-seventh?
We jumped right to June.
I know.
Would you be ready on May twenty-seventh?
I'm, the point's just fine with me.
Concern. Oh, that won't work. We won't be available, though, after I read the proclamation.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be ready this, at that point.
How about the twenty-ninth or thirtieth?
Anything later in that week, after the council meeting.
Thirty-first? Oh, that's a Friday. You don't want to do Friday.
Should we go?
Twenty-ninth or thirtieth? Is that too soon?
We could try for the thirtieth.
I'm sorry?
We could try for the thirtieth.
But the thirtieth worked.
That's a Thursday.
I think I'm free.
It works for me.
Um, I could probably do later in the afternoon, but if I can't make it, then I would say just go.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is your first budget. Absolutely not.
Um.
It's too important.
Four o'clock?
Four?
Yeah.
That looks okay on my end. Dennis?
Yep, Thursday, the thirtieth.
At four PM. And we'll make Cleve buy pizza.
We don't want to kick anybody out here?
Kara's bringing soup.
No, but we won't recycle. We won't recycle the boxes, though.
I'd be lucky if I get here.
Oh, no soup? Now they don't want to.
Sorry.
All right, we will do our best then to hit May thirtieth at.
Does that work for staff? Staff, Patty, can we run this side? They're going.
How about?
Oh, look at that. Pizza's good.
Thumbs up. Okay.
All right, so we're going to reschedule the second budget workshop.
Excuse me. I will not be here on the thirtieth. I'm sorry.
Kind of important to have, you know, it's.
You don't need me.
I have a proposal.
Okay.
I honestly think we're going to need more time, just with what we need to get done. And I'm willing to meet separately with Councilmember Borelli. I know Cleve and I have done this in the past, where we've met with another council member separately. But I know that's not optimal, but.
I'd really like to have the whole council there, though.
Staff is available on the fifth, if that would work.
But.
Dave, I think maybe what we should do is, why don't we go back and look at June tenth again? We just know that we won't have, we may have to schedule a special meeting in there. Do, because do we have to do two meetings? Do we have to do a public hearing?
We don't have to.
It's not required, right? It's just our practice.
Yeah, it's a good practice.
So if we wait until June tenth, you'd have to realize that we would probably just do one meeting, do the public hearing and adoption on the twenty-fifth of June. And we could do that that way. Generally, we've done two. We've done a, we've done our presentation at the first meeting in June.
That's scheduled on the eleventh, right?
Currently, it's scheduled on the eleventh, but if we move this to June tenth, we won't be able to do that.
Oh, gotcha.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, if staff could just, real quick, I won't be available on June tenth. Not that I have to be, but I'll be at a RENA, RENA meeting.
What, what time?
Um.
We need to have everybody there if at all possible.
From one o'clock to four o'clock.
Well, this may end up being in the morning.
In the morning, I'm free, as long as I can take off by noon.
So let's look at, if we can push the joint meeting to the afternoon, then maybe do our budget meeting in the morning from, what, nine to noon, something like that.
Or eight.
Or eight, if you want to meet earlier, whatever time works. I'm in the office at seven. You tell me when you want to meet.
In the morning. Doesn't, doesn't matter. Eight or nine.
Either one.
Either one's fine.
Patty, are you available on the tenth? Kara?
Yep.
Monday, the tenth.
Eight o'clock on the tenth. Let's do that.
Okay. That'll give us plenty of time.
Bring bagels, huh?
The only, the only conflict will be if the Board of Supervisors, for some reason, needs to do in the morning instead, and then we'll have to.
Then we might have to just.
Well, you know, let's just let them know that we're, we have to do our budget.
We've got to do the budget. I mean, you know, we've been working around them and their schedule for, you know.
Because this isn't, not to slam.
Does that work for you, Dave, if we do that?
Yes, and I appreciate the council's flexibility.
That'll give us the extra time. That'll give us a little more time on a staff level to make sure that we have everything together as clean as possible when we bring that to you on the tenth.
And then is there a way to get the information, like the draft budget, out to people in the public that would be interested in lieu of having the public presentation?
Yeah. We'll, we'll get it out as early as we can. We won't have, I mean, for that June tenth meeting, we. We won't have, I mean, for that June 10th meeting, we probably won't have that much before that, but for the next meeting, we will get it out as early as we can before our 25th meeting, yeah.
Yeah, one way we could do it is staff's recommendation, having a presentation form ready to go, and if it turns out we need to alter that, we could alter it right before the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
And although staff on, let's see, what is this, the west side of the room?
June, June 10th, with the exception of Pierre, your conflict, does anybody else have any conflicts on June 10th? Are we okay there?
Nick, you're good?
Terry? Okay, yeah, looks like.
Terry's still down there, thanks Terry. Well, that was difficult. But it's important that we all be available and participate.
I'm glad we're all here doing it, not trying to do it on over the computer, with emails. And I'm sure Regina's happy.
Thank you, Lee, that was.
Okay, so the last item is what we do about the request from the, and hearing the presentations regarding the historic city hall, date for that, what you would prefer to do.
And you're tentatively, you have it tentatively scheduled for May 28th?
Tentatively, my plan was to meet at like 4 o'clock on the 28th, hear the presentation, and then make your decision at your regular meeting at 6 o'clock.
That's Mindy's dinner. Mindy, retirement?
28th?
28th, it's her dinner.
Yeah, I saw that, I saw that invite, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, I am in June, we're looking at May, I gotta go back to May.
I have a conflict with it in June, but maybe that's what it is, okay.
Oh, the city council, okay.
You're right, Mindy's retirement.
I'm, I'm good with how you have proposed it.
But they are unavailable to be here.
Well, some, some of their team are unavailable.
Right, I would, I mean.
How long have they known, how, how long have both groups known that the, the tentative schedule was the 28th of May?
Um, it hasn't been out there that long, maybe a week or two since, since the last, I think I mentioned, I told them that at the last, when they did their presentation.
But some of their members will be available, right?
All I know is what you see in this letter. We traded emails, and then they sent this letter, and they said, key team members of my presentation will be out of town. So, but I don't know who that is. The presentation previously was primarily done by one person.
Right, and she didn't say that she would be out of town, so I don't know why.
No, she didn't. This comes from her, by the way, this letter.
Right, yeah.
It didn't say I will be out of town, it said key members.
And she might want to bring that lady that did the presentation about the grants.
Yeah, could be.
That might be a member of her, I don't know who she's talking about. It does seem to be her.
I mean, if they are hoping to apply for grants for June 1st, I think that it would make sense to do it at this meeting and push it back to the May, the June 11th meeting.
Right, right.
So.
I agree.
And otherwise, there's not another meeting, it would have, it would have to be a special, which, based on how difficult that last one was.
Based on everything we see there, my thought is that this meeting on the 28th, that makes the most sense, and what you've just talked about in trying to schedule a special meeting to try to do it. I mean, you could push it back to, I guess, to your June 11th meeting, and do it on that date.
But then they wouldn't be, they would miss their.
I mean, I guess the other option would be, I could go back and ask them, we can either do May 28th or June 11th, whichever you would prefer.
Well, that's fine, I mean, we could have a discussion on this letter of support anyways, because that's kind of a separate issue versus the date of the, of what day they, they come in.
Right.
I, I'll go back to the mayor's previous statements earlier on today, and I don't, when we did the letter with Arts Council, it wasn't based upon this, this proposal, correct? It was just a generic, just a general letter of support for their idea of a cultural district.
Correct.
So if we did a letter for this, this would be specific to this proposal?
I don't know, this is the first I heard of it when I got this letter.
It seems to reflect that we support the project.
I would say if their project is deemed, we find their project suitable, and that we select their project, at that point, we could give them a letter to that support.
Right.
Which we could do for either, either project, if it's specific to those two buildings, and not just overall.
And that project is selected, but prior to selection.
I, I don't think it's, yeah.
It's not, it, it infers, it infers that we've selected it as a preferred project.
Yeah, I was gonna say, yeah.
With Mr. Driscoll for sending out letters of support.
How can you support something that hasn't been selected?
Right.
Yeah, I know nothing about it, so I haven't seen it, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't part of the, so I can't agree to.
And I don't know what, you know, we have made the decision, but it's just like, you know, how can, if that's the one.
So I don't think that should enter into our, you know, our.
I guess really the only question I think you need to make tonight is, do you want to offer them the option of the 28th or the 11th, or do you want to just say we're gonna do it on the 28th?
I'd like to get it over with, frankly.
June is gonna be very busy with budget.
It doesn't make a difference to me.
But if you want to do, I don't care, whatever.
Let's see, we can't really, we can't, we're, we're, we're on the edges here discussing an unagendized item.
It will probably.
Because I was at the presentation.
If you select a date, we just can't determine what action you're gonna take.
So keep an eye on us, Mr. Driscoll. The presentations, it would seem to me that at this point, and again, to acknowledge the work that the council, excuse me, the ad hoc committee, that all those members have done, we don't need to sit through another 30-minute presentation, perhaps a 10 or 15-minute presentation from both, no, regardless of how this goes forward, I don't think we need another 30 minutes, because it'll turn into 45.
And that's per presentation.
Yes, so I'm thinking maybe acknowledging that we are going to get the, the scores from this ad hoc committee with their recommendation, and we will get all the documents that were presented at that meeting, correct, Dave?
Right, the presentation and their proposals, and any other thing that came.
So everything, we'll have all that in writing, so the council will have that as an entire body to review before that meeting. So if we do have it, I would, what's the council's thought on saying either 10 or 15 minutes per applicant?
I would say at least 15, I think.
15?
15 sounds fine to me.
Yeah.
Do we still have to pick a date?
And I would say do it on the 28th, because perhaps reduced down to 15 minutes, these key members will not be key anymore.
Well.
Leave it this, leave it.
My feeling is they've been through this once, so they know what, you know, what they need to present, what we're asking for and looking for, and to me, it should be an easy thing, whether there's one or 10 people to do the presentation.
And there was primarily one speaker.
It was, exactly.
So 10-minute presentations on the 28th. 15, excuse me, 15-minute presentations, and we'll continue forward on the 28th.
So I'll, I'll make a motion that we limit the presentations to 15 minutes, and that we, we don't need a motion?
All right, so just directions.
That's a consensus of the council.
Don't take any action right now. Just direct the date.
And the time is prior to the, to the council meeting?
Is it like part of closed session, or part of closed?
My, my intent was to do it prior to closed session, now that was when we were looking at it being, you know, two 30-minute presentations, so you're talking in maybe an hour to, hour and 15 minutes by time you get the other, et cetera. If you're cutting them down, I'll leave it up to you, if you want to do it prior to, or do you want to do a part of the council meeting?
I'd do it prior to.
Prior to?
Because just think.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Plus, we get these blank stares.
Assuming we have a 5:30 meeting.
5 o'clock?
We have a, well, if we have a 5:30 closed session, we have to do it, the earliest would be 4:30, that we could, the latest, the latest, either 4 or 4:30. That's when we should do it.
4:30.
Or 4, whatever.
Keep it tight, 4:30.
4:30?
Yeah, I like 4:30.
But if we have a, okay, so that, that gives an hour.
That gives you an hour, if you're only doing 15-minute presentations, and any, any, what you'll state is any, what I would say is 15-minute presentations, and maybe 5 to 10 minutes of questions that you may have.
Correct.
We're not gonna allow any comments from the public, because we'll state that we'll allow that in the, the public meeting, can we do that? We'll do it in the regular meeting?
Sorry, I was thinking about what you might have for closed session, I apologize.
So if, if we do the presentations prior to the meeting, we allow the council to ask some questions, we don't take comments from the public, but we will let the public know they'll be allowed to comment in the regular meeting at 6 o'clock.
Yes.
That's allowable.
The thinking is that we will see the presentations, ask specific questions to those presentations, then adjourn, come back, and in the same agenda will be the actual action item.
All right.
And that must be when we would take public comments again.
That'll be during the regular meeting.
Does that work?
Yeah.
As long as they can ask questions about the presentation.
Shall be ordained. They'll let them talk for just a minute. The chief is patiently standing by. It's the Warriors play tonight.
Pablo did good the other night.
Are we there?
We have a presentation from Chief Ortega.
Yeah, we're just talking about.
The chief, Ortega, presentation is waiting.
We've got, we've got, we've got May 28th at 4:30.
Correct.
And then you'll go to your regular meeting, June 10th at 8 o'clock.
Correct.
Those two meetings we just scheduled.
8:00 AM.
And possibly the soups, the afternoon.
Their soups, yeah, quite likely.
Soup, what's, yeah, what did she say?
We're back to soup.
Okay, thank you.
Regina, do you have all that?
June 10th, 8:00.
I will stand by while you write that down. Patiently waiting through all of this discussion has been Chief Ortega to give us his update, item 15.1, the strategies employed by the Placerville Police Department in addressing the homelessness challenges in Placerville. Chief, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to keep this brief in light of the late hour. The city manager and I have been discussing for a little over a month about the efforts that we have undertaken in the police department and within the city of Placerville, and he wanted me to provide you just with a summary of what we, what we're doing now and where we'd like to go in the future. First of all, as everyone knows, the homeless situation has affected our city and the state without exception. We get calls every day of people that are homeless, that are causing nuisance problems. Our goal usually is to deal with the problem at hand, but our long-term goal is to be proactive and find a long-term solution to many of these problems. We try to find, we work with many agencies within the area, including the Department of Health and Human Services, various veterans groups, the faith community, including the upper room, and work collaboratively, and as we try to find a solution to this problem. And I say a solution, it's not going to solve the whole solution, but to find something that is acceptable to the citizens of Placerville. What we try to do is figure out, people are in crisis in one way or the other, it could be because they're homeless, it could be because they have some other behavioral health issues. One way or another, officers become very good at trying to find whether or not this person can be helped by referring them to other agencies, taking them for a mental health evaluation, or in some cases, booking them into the county jail. Over the past year, as I noted earlier with a word of Officer Litzias, we have come across many examples where if we simply talk to these folks and dig a little deeper as to what their issues are, I'll back up and say, there's no cookie cutter solution for this problem, I think I've, I've said that many times before the council. But Officer Litzias has started kind of a trend within our police department of finding some long-term solutions. I'm not gonna use any names, but I wanted to talk about just a couple of examples. Over the, within the last few months, there was one individual who was, for lack of a better term, setting up a structure behind Home Depot, he was digging into the vegetation and was actually building a structure that was obviously illegal, and he was gonna live there. Couple of our officers talked to him, found out what his story was, he, we found out he was a veteran, we were able to plug him into Veteran Services down at the VA Hospital at Mather Air Force Base, or the former Mather Field at Sacramento. He now is not homeless, he was evaluated by the appropriate practitioners down there through the Veterans Administration, he has a job, and he's working, and he's a productive member of society, he still lives up here, but he works for the Veterans Administration in helping other people like him that were prior, having prior problems. There's another gentleman that we were able to get into programs through DHHS, and he's in his programs, and he is no longer homeless. There's another individual, and like I said, I'm not gonna use names, this goes back a couple more months, who was a chronic homeless person here in Placerville, everybody knew his name, our officers knew who he was, we were able to reunite him with his daughter, he'd been estranged from her for several years, working with DHHS, we were able to get the daughter to take guardianship over this individual, and basically get him into a care facility, and the timing was at least fortunate for him, as he was suffering a chronic illness that eventually took his life.
What's DHHS?
Department of Health and Human Services, through El Dorado County. The lesson there is that rather than pass away on the streets, this gentleman passed away with dignity under the care of, you know, professional individuals. One of the problems that you're all aware of is, at least I've talked briefly about it, is in September of 2018, the United States Court of Appeal Ninth Circuit ruled on a case called Martin versus the City of Boise. And in short, what this did is took away our ability to enforce our no camping ordinance in public properties. That doesn't apply to private property, but public property. The city manager and I have talked more times than I can count about how we're going to address these issues going forward, and we've come up with some other creative ways, working with, again, our collaborative partners on the West Slope. There's a lot of regulations from the state of California, if you can imagine, on pollution near our streams, which is Be Hangtown Creek, and so we've worked with some partners from the Department of Fish and Game on addressing those issues. And we've also worked with many other departments, including the Sheriff's Department, El Dorado County Probation, Caltrans, and various agencies, again, within the El Dorado County Department of Health and Human Services. We have also worked with other city departments, including the Department of Parks and Recreation, Code Enforcement, and Public Works, to address some of the damage caused by the illegal camping in our city. We are not going to sit back and let the Ninth Circuit decision adversely affect how we're going to protect life and property in our city, and I appreciate Mayor Acuna's suggestion to come up with the permanent ban, at least for the summer, from, I think you said July to December, Mayor, is that what you're thinking, of all open fires, because that, I, I will be very honest, that is our biggest fear, I think everybody has a new I think everybody has a new fear as we go in the summer, but for the two years I've been the police chief, August through November, I spent some sleepless nights worrying about that. So that will, if we can get that done through some future policy decisions at the city level, that will, that will help us. Moving forward, we, and I say we at the police department, are working on a more concerted effort to bring the Department of Health and Human Services more into our circle here in the city of Placerville, and work with the District Attorney's Office also on ensuring that they're working to prosecute those chronic nuisance crimes that we see within our city. All of this is all related that I'm talking about. When I talk about code enforcement, there are some that ask, well, why is code enforcement part of the police department's concern? Well, a lot of these empty and open and accessible dwellings that are in our city, we've seen fires at several of them. I don't have that data in front of me, and if those fires get out of hand or cause more problems or forbid, you know, hopefully not a loss of life, that's how code enforcement fits into our purview. It's been stated several times by me and others at these city council meetings at the crisis here, and the homeless crisis in El Dorado County is not isolated to just our county. It affects our entire state as well as the nation, and we're just going to continue, and we'll probably come back at some point and make a better, bigger presentation as how we are integrating with the El Dorado County Department of Health and Human Services. I'm presenting this just to, so you have information, because there is some chatter, if you watch social media, that the city of Placerville is not doing anything to address the homeless crisis here in Placerville, and that is absolutely not true. And we wanted to make sure that the council and the public is aware that there are several layers of effort on our part to work with our partners in the county to address the homeless crisis from a public safety perspective, as well as the safety of these individuals who simply need to have some care directed their way. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Thank you very much, Chief. Are there any questions for the chief, comments? Dennis?
Yes, um, there is, thank you, Chief, and I, and I say that with all sincerity, I do appreciate the level of effort that the police, that our police department puts into working with these, working with these, you know, people in a, in a very personal and proactive way to help them, you know, find care. There's a piece that for me is missing is there's the issue of drug, drug abuse and that whole cycle, and part of this was, you know, part, this was really brought to light to a certain extent by the, um, video that you sent out about Seattle, and just the whole concept. Now, I realize that we cannot do what they're doing in Maryland or other places. There's a lot of resources and money that have gone into that, including the corrections departments and a variety of things that more than likely aren't available in this state. And with that said, I would like to, you know, understand or look at opportunities where we can explore what we can do in terms of having a memorialized cooperative agreement with the DA and with the HH, the HHS.
Dean.
Health and Human Services. And, um, and with the police and as well as the sheriff, because even if we put, if, you know, while we can protect what's within our city, if the county doesn't put in a fire protection or do something about fires right over the city line in the Weber Creek Canyon there, those, that comes right up the hill, and depending on the day, that could be every bit, just as bad as not worse than having it in the city. And so what I'm looking for and is, is, is starting the conversation with the county, the Health Department, and the DA's office to, and, and the sheriffs to have this, have a, have a concerted effort around this modeled after some of the things in there, but, you know, not like that because we're our own unique community here. But, um, like, this is, I look at this as an opportunity to start that, that process, and I would, you know, I'd like your comments on that.
Thank you, Dennis. I agree with you. There, there is a need to be collaborative with our county partners. That is something that I've slowly tried to get off the ground, but what I think Cleve and I have looked at is, we want an ongoing, as you say, continuing, even memorialized partnership with us and El Dorado County, and I think that's going to be part of the topic or the agenda when we have the joint city council board of supervisors meeting. And this is not meant to be a critique of El Dorado County in any way, shape, or form. It is simply, we all need to step up our game and move to the next level where we are all working and having the train going the same direction, rather than eight different arms doing eight different things. The problem isn't any different, whether it's on Missouri Flat Road or Main Street or any other part of the city or county. We are all adversely affected. These homeless individuals don't know city and county lines, and so we really can't work that way either. I have the unique experience, as I tell people many times, I speak county as well as municipal city, because I worked for a county for twenty-nine years. I have a familiarity of what the departments are able to do. At the same time, the limitations are here in El Dorado County, because we are a rural county. We are not a Seattle or San Francisco or even Sacramento, but there are still some very good practices that we can all learn from and take and move forward in addressing some of these issues. So, I appreciate the fact that, you and I talked earlier today about the drug component is missing from my report. I didn't want to get too much into the weeds. That's part of the overall behavioral health issue that affects our county. I will say it is mixed with drugs as well as alcohol consumption and abuse, but that is going to be part of the conversation as we talk with El Dorado County also. So, does that answer your, hopefully that's what you're looking for.
It, it, it is, and, you know, I guess after our, after our meeting with the board of supervisors, we can circle back and, and discuss how, how we are seeing the participation level from the DA and how we, how we want to work with him, because he's a pivotal part of moving this, moving whatever we do forward. I mean, because we can do all we want to help, help people if there's no teeth to the rules and the regulations that are, that are already in place that aren't being enforced, then we're kind of, well, there's a lot of sayings, but we're just not working efficiently and collectively and with, with our partners in this community that should be working with us.
And that, that's part of my reason for, you know, trying to gently bring the county in, because as, we've had this conversation for at least the two years I've been here, but for sure last year, and we can go forward as a city to a point. We, we don't have the funding or the mechanisms to do the things that the county agencies do have. So, um, yes, we can circle back and, and report back perhaps in the fall as to where we go from there, because this problem's not going to go away. In spite of all the efforts on the state's level, we need to look after El Dorado County and Placerville first. Whatever the rest of the state does, we'll have to unfortunately work around the legislation that comes out of Sacramento. And I say that with all due respect, not to our local representatives, but to the majority at the state capitol, which is a whole nother discussion.
I was just going to make a comment. I agree with everything the chief just said, and Councilmember Thomas, wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea to have, I mean, I'd love to have the DA actually come to a meeting and talk about what they're doing in terms of some of these, you know, chronic folks that we have and, and, you know, how we're dealing with those, enforcing some of the laws with them. So, if we could, city manager, I'd love to have the district attorney come and maybe do a brief presentation to us, and I'm happy to go meet with him prior if that should be necessary, but I'd love to have him out to, to have that conversation.
That's a great idea. Patty?
Um, I, oh, you want to answer?
Let's let Cleve answer.
Well, I was just going to say, I know that the chief has had those discussions with the district attorneys. They've had some, some, and maybe more need to go, especially regarding how we identify those habitual offenders and potential to go after them. So, we can, I believe the chief and I can go back and talk to the, the district attorney and see if he would be willing to come and make a presentation.
Have staff make contact, and then we'll follow up as, as necessary.
So, my two cents. We, remember, well, Wendy was very active on, what was the?
Opportunity knocks.
Opportunity knocks. So, I'm going back in years, and I'm going to say that all started about four years ago now, maybe. So, we've all been waiting and waiting and waiting for opportunity knocks, and we've all been just not really kind of doing anything because we thought something was being done, at least I did, and I'm sorry if I had the wrong, but I don't think I was alone. It's all been talk, and, and we just keep talking, and like you're saying, have the DA come and we'll talk to him. I'm getting tired of talking because we're not doing anything, and I agree with the chief. It's just, I, I just, we've relied on, and I know we have to rely on the county because they have all the services, and we need the services to help us solve some of these problems, but what can we do without the county and the services? I mean, for Placerville, I don't know. I, I'm just, I'm exasperated, as you can tell.
So, I agree with you, Councilmember Morelli, and that's been part of my motivation for a lot of this. You know, I've been the police chief for just over two years, and in that two years, I've heard, like you, about opportunity knocks and a couple of other initiatives. But quite honestly, the problem continues to grow. The problem continues to affect our citizens and our business owners, and nothing is really getting done on that level. So, that's, that's part of my motivation to gently bring the county into this conversation. I appreciate those efforts that are going on behind the scenes that you brought up, but we in the city need to see more, as I've said, presence from El Dorado County within the city of Placerville. There are a lot of best practices that are done in our region that I'm not going to tell other public agencies, you know, how to do their job, but I might gently recommend some practices that I've seen that have, starting to have a positive effect, depending on where you look. And again, we're a, we're a rural county. I understand we don't have the volume, but the problem that we have is not, we don't see any change, and Cleve and I have talked about that, and it's, it's a challenge. Now, to answer your question, what more can we do? We're kind of up against the wall as to what we can do. We can't fund a shelter, we can't fund DHHS-type staff, counselors, therapists, those types of things. That's just not.
Can I, can I correct you for just a moment? We are funding all of those things. That, they're, they're getting our tax dollars. We are funding.
Well, that's correct. The county is, is, is getting funds from city taxpayers, but we as a city are not going to take a line item from Dave's budget and, and do that. So, it is appropriate for us to talk with El Dorado County and ask for more of a presence in our city, quite honestly.
Well, again, talk, 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 so we.
Well, when I say talk, I say let, let's take some actionable steps.
That's what I would like to.
That, that's what I'm talking, talking is probably not the right word, but what actionable steps can we look forward to from our perspective here in the city, from you, El Dorado County, to move forward on helping address this issue that, again, continues to just grow?
Yes, just a quick comment, my, my concern, and I, and I agree with what you're saying, we need to do something, but you look about what other cities and some that are doing things, Sacramento touts some of their programs that they're doing, but look at how bad the problem still is in Sacramento.
It is, yeah.
And that's the point that I want to make. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about opportunity knocks and what they've done, but I think a big part of the problem that exists here is nobody has a good solution. I mean, you look at, you look at, I mean, the, the one piece we talked about, you've all viewed the, the Seattle model and what they recommended back in, back east, I forget where it was at.
I think it was Maryland or somewhere back there.
Maryland or somewhere back there. And, you know, that was a, a piece to, to help with the drug problem, and that may be one piece, and maybe that, I, I do know that, for example, Marshall Hospital has a similar program to that to help with the opioid problem, and there, it's an excellent program that they're promoting and they're doing, and they're, they're trying to get it, get it going, and not trying to get it going, they have it going, and John maybe could talk to it better than I, but I've seen a presentation on it. It's a great program that is very similar to that program that they talked about back east that they are doing now. So, it, it's going on now, but I, I guess I'm not trying to be a downer of this, but what I, what I'm saying on behalf of opportunity knocks a little bit, I think, is, because Kim Nida is part of that, she's been part of it from the very beginning, our Commander Nida. There are, there are not good solutions.
But, and I think it was, a lot of it, we were counting on funding.
Right.
And we did get that one source, but it's, it's a drop in the bucket for what we need.
It is, it is, yeah.
I was going to ask the chief, just kind of ballpark, how much of our homelessness is due to drugs? Is it fifty percent, seventy-five percent?
You know, I don't have that data in front of me, but I, and it's fluid depending on the person. I'd say it's over fifty percent. So, um, but that's not the whole, I mean, as Cleve just said, there's no one fix to this. It's, it's going to have to take various groups, organizations. So, drugs, sure, that's going to be part of it. There's going to be the other behavioral health issues, mental illness, alcoholism. There's a host of issues.
Well, could we take that, that, I mean, like, what Cleve's talking about, could we just on our own kind of work with, ask Marshall Hospital to be a partner with us or the?
They already are a partner, Patty. They, they do, Marshall Hospital is a phenomenal partner on the West Slope and for our city. In fact, there's times that I think that they're a little overwhelmed. They'll never say that, but I see what their efforts are, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, but they do a lot for us.
The, the one area that I really think there could be an improvement in and where I'm really frustrated with, in order to solve a person's problem, you need to know what that problem is. And I see up and down the street, you know, there was one yesterday that I intervened a little bit in one of these, one of our stores that where someone was being disturbed, let's put it that way. But I don't know what the true story is, what is behind that, and that's what, you know, we've talked a little bit, we've thrown out this idea of this navigator program that some cities have. Just to know, you know, again, I don't think you can solve an individual person's problem until you know what that problem is. And so that is the one area that, from my point of view, would be the biggest thing to, you know, and I know they are doing that, they're creating this database that, because they have to have that for the funding that they get, database that says, you know, what is, who is this person, what is their history, what are their needs, et cetera. And to me, that's one of the biggest things that we could have right now would be to have that program and that in place so that you can start picking away at those and identifying, okay, this person's problem is X, Y, Z. Can, can veterans help them? Is it mental health issues that need, they need to address? Is it, is it the drug problem? Is it the alcohol problem? But start identifying where you need to push the services towards, and, and until you know what the problem is, I don't think you can identify the solution.
Until we have all the partners in place.
Exactly.
Including the Sheriff's Department, the district attorney, HHS, and the city.
Right.
Kara, I want to let you get a chance to comment on this.
Um, well, thank you for your presentation, and it was really, it's nice to hear the success stories of your officers' interventions that are making a difference in getting people off the street, even if it's, you know, one case out of five hundred. It's, it's, it's good to hear those stories, so thank you for presenting them. And I know that there is a lot of exasperation about this, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of the board of supervisor meeting. So, that's all my comments for now.
Thank you for your patience. Chief, if I'd had any idea that we would be here at this late hour with this particular item, because it's very important that the community understand what their police department is providing for them, I would have certainly thought to move this item up earlier in the agenda, so my apologies to you and your staff. This is critical. This is an issue that I get contacted on almost daily. Someone nicely asked me over the weekend how I, as mayor, was going to solve homelessness, and they were dead serious. They wanted to know why I was letting Placerville go to rack and ruin, and why did, why wasn't I out there solving homelessness? So, this is a, this is a global issue, and we do need to be on top of every potential opportunity that we can find, and if it's at the county, if it's going to be at the state. And I just want to thank you for taking the time to highlight the hard work that your department, individuals in your department have in a lot of ways taken on themselves because they deal with these people twenty-four hours a day, and they know that they're human beings, and then they know that they have real problems. And it is going to take a kaleidoscope of solutions, including very expensive hospitals and treatment facilities and caregivers to solve homelessness in the city or in this, anywhere in this world. So, you know, we'll push forward, and again, my apologies for this being so late, because this is, would have been nice to have a full house to hear this, and I hope that if we are able to get someone from, just someone from the district attorney's office, you know, that's an elected position, and that is a highly respected authority level, position in any government organization. It would seem appropriate that they come and help answer, just like I was asked a couple days ago, how I am going to solve homelessness in Placerville and in the world, basically. I think it would be very appropriate to have that presentation made and then have this same information, something, or maybe something current presented so that those folks that will be in attendance at that meeting can hear the ongoing work that we're doing, that you're doing. So, thank you very much, and again, my apologies for being so late. Is there any other comments? We have a couple more little items we need to take care of. City manager, staff, did you have any other staff reports, Cleve? Is staff still here? Is Cleve's staff is still here?
I, I think that's all I was going to mention, where we are on the fire ordinance, but I think you talked about that earlier in the meeting. Anything more you want me to add?
Fire ordinance?
Currently, the plan is to bring that back draft at your next meeting on the twenty-eighth of May, so, for review.
All right, and we have a number of items that are on that, including the relayer paving, which I'm obviously very excited about, I keep mentioning it, and we have some, the tobacco grant. And we have some, the tobacco grant acceptance, so that is excellent news, I'm hoping. And so, we look forward to that. So, our next meeting will be on May 28th at, with a 5:30 close session and 6:00 PM regular session. And I would like to go ahead and adjourn this meeting in the memory of Scotty, a beloved member of our city hall staff whom we recently lost. So, I'd like the clerk further to have the record reflect that. Thank you, and good night.